Good morning and welcome to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Budget Reconciliation Workshop Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting's order. Mr. Merrill, before we start, let me read this in the record. It says, "I'll be unable to attend today's budget reconciliation meeting as I have a prior commitment." Please read this reason for my absence on the record. This comes from Commissioner Stacy White. Mr. Merrill.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
So, I just want to give a quick overview of what you're going to hear today. There's a lot of material. We're prepared to go through all of it, or none of it, or in between, whatever you like. So, there's six things that are going to happen today. First is to show you a five-year projection of the budget, which is extremely relevant now because of the stresses in the unincorporated fund and issues over transportation. Second thing that you will hear that we need to do is overview the recommended budget. I know you heard that at the last board meeting, but I think we want to just quickly go back and refresh your memories, and all this material is in the backup you received. The third thing that you will hear are revenue options to fund the transportation program, which was addressed in the presentation at the board meeting, but this gives you more detail, revenue projections and so forth. Fourth thing is the comprehensive transportation program. So, the reason to present this is just context. We're not asking the board to do anything today on the transportation program, per se. When Lucia and John talk about this, this is going to require multiple workshops, I think, over the next few months. But today, you needed, I felt you needed to see the entire comprehensive transportation plan that you can then digest and make decisions on over the next coming months. So, we'll do that. The fifth item would be commissioner flagging process, if you have any flagged items, and Tom will talk about that later. The final thing, which is the main reason that we do this, is to adopt the TRIM, the Truth and Milage, which is a requirement under state statute that we adopt millage before the end of July. And once you set that TRIM millage, you cannot exceed it without a lot of pain and suffering. There is a provision for emergencies, but that's for emergencies. So, when you set the TRIM millage today in all of the four tax funds, unincorporated, countywide, parks, ELAP, and the other one, can't remember what it is, library, that's it. You can't exceed it. You can reduce millage, but you can't exceed it. So, main points that you're going to hear today. And I said this when I delivered the budget. We've, I believe, exercised diligent and comprehensive cost control over the last 10 years. I gave you some metrics on that. We produce unit costs now for all our services that anybody can see on a real-time basis through Oracle, our accounting system. So, we've done that. We've reduced costs and maintained cost control without reducing service. That's important. And we had a nice community survey that confirmed that overall people think that that's true. So, in the unincorporated general fund, what that means is, from my perspective, this is a revenue problem. It's not an expenditure problem. There is no services anybody wants to cut, and we've pretty much ground this to the bone in terms of expenditures. So, it's a revenue problem. In the long run, land use changes will, may solve part of the problem, but fixing land use is a long-term process. Right now, we got a revenue problem. The immediate challenges are existing deficiencies. So, the problems that we're having in the unincorporated fund are not because of future growth, they're from past deficiencies, however they occurred. At this point, probably is irrelevant because we just need to fix it. We can learn lessons, certainly, but the main point is we cannot continue to fund transportation and other essential services from general revenue. We need a dedicated transportation funding source. Hopefully, we will have that when the Supreme Court decides. But if it doesn't, we talked about last time at your board meeting, what's Plan B? So, we're presenting to you some revenue options. Kevin's going to cover that in his five-year projections. And that will be probably a topic of discussion today. So, with that, those are the main points of our presentation. There'll be plenty of time for board discussion and questions. And with that, we're ready to kick it off with Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. So, as Mr. Merrill just said, I'm going to walk you through a brief overview of our five-year projections update for the two general funds. We'll talk about where we are with the current recommended budget, where we are as far as the transportation policy and plan, otherwise known as the 812 million plan, and how that would lay out with these five-year projections. The parameters have not changed greatly since we presented the five-year projections in April. The main change is that the property praiser estimates for growth in our taxable base for property taxes. We had modeled 8.5 percent. We actually are getting a little bit more than 9 percent. So, that's been a gain of about 3.4 million countywide and about 2 million unincorporated. Otherwise, our assumptions are basically the same. On page three of the pro forma, this slide takes the current recommended budget and planned budget for '20 and '21, both of which are presented as balanced. But in this case, what we're trying to depict here is if we were to continue to try to keep pace with the revenue transfers, the ad valorem transfers, from the unincorporated fund to the transportation policy and plan, again, the 812 plan that, as it seems to be commonly known. So, in FY '20, this graph shows a balanced countywide fund at zero, and it shows an unincorporated deficit of $46 million. That $46 million includes the recommendation that Mr. Merrill has spoken previously about in the unincorporated fund, the reduction of $31.4 million of transfers to the policy purposes compared to FY '19. Now, why does it say minus 46? It says minus 46 because if we were to keep up with the plan, the plan anticipated and has built into it increasing transfers over the years. So, if we were to keep up with the plan in FY '20, we not only would have needed the 31.4, we would have needed approximately $15 million more, $46 million. So, this graph then takes the next five years and says, "What would we look like if we were to keep up with that plan?" Now, one important thing to note is, or a couple of important things to note, is that in the unincorporated fund, we have modeled in the sheriff's needs for staffing increases over these years to keep up with ratios to population, for law enforcement and jails. And we also have the two new fire stations that are in FY '20, and the operating costs of those fire stations in later years. But we don't have any additional fire stations in '21 to '24, above those two that are in the FY '20 budget. So, that's important to notice. There is future CIT capacity that will be coming along in a couple of years that could be used to construct new fire stations. And there's also additional transfers to transportation, even in the recommended FY '20 budget, about eight or nine million dollars that could be repurposed for further operating costs of any fire stations above the two. Slide four. Slide four really reflects the recommended budget and the outer years that we project, given the recommended budget. So, this indeed does show the reduction in FY '20 of the transfers to the policy of $31 million. It also reflects that we wouldn't have increased to 47 or 46. And through the balance of the years, this reduces transfers to transportation over those five years by about $187 million from the unincorporated fund. And using, in its place, the transportation sales tax to indeed fund those $187 billion. The transportation sales surtax is a restricted revenue that's limited to transportation by state statute. It's paid by residents and visitors, and it would release general revenue for other critical purposes that don't have the benefit of a dedicated funding source, such as new fire stations, operating costs, code enforcement uses, that sort of thing. But even still, we have, in the outer years, a deficit of $74 million. That's about $25 million a year. There's some outer years of surplus in the countywide fund. That's been the consistent presentation that we've had here, is that our countywide fund is doing relatively well. Our unincorporated fund is stressed due to population growth and the services that come from that fund, such as public safety in large part. Now, the last slides look at some scenarios or options that, if the surtax happened to be invalidated or were not available in some way, and we were still looking to try to keep up with the 812 plan. In slide five, this is a case where, let's see what happens if we adopt the new five, a new five cents fuel tax. That fuel tax generates about $29 million annually. It needs, it would be shared with municipalities, and the share that would come to the board would be about $20 million annually. So, what we've done here is taken the case, again, where we try to keep up with the plan, and we add in that $20 million annually. So, it does reduce those outer-year deficits in the unincorporated fund from about $100 million. The fuel tax has, of course, the advantage that it's directly related transportation. It also has the advantage that it's paid by visitors as well as residents. Slide six. Let's set aside the fuel tax option for a minute, and let's look at the effect of another new possibility for revenue, and that's the public service tax. The public service tax is a tax that is charged against the sale of electricity and fuel oils and, well, that's the main things. In Florida, fuel oils aren't a large market. It's electricity that's the larger market, you know, for heating and cooling. And so, for those municipalities and counties that do have a public service tax, somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 100 percent, depending on the jurisdiction, of revenue from a public service tax indeed comes from electricity sales. It can be adopted up to 10 percent. So, 10 percent on a $100 electric bill would be $10. In this case, we think and estimate that in Hillsborough County, we might garner $60 million a year. That estimate is based on looking at some of our peer counties that do have the public service tax. It could be more, it could be perhaps up to 80, but we took a conservative view in this graph and said, "Let's look at what happened if it had indeed garnered $60 million a year." And indeed, in this case, you can see the unincorporated deficit switches from minus 2.61 in the outer years to plus 20, which, over five years, is about $5 million or $4 million a year. So, it does go a long way, of course, to meeting, keeping up with the transportation plan, but it doesn't necessarily leave room for additional fire stations. But it goes a long way to helping the unincorporated fund. It's a general revenue. It could be limited in duration, meaning that it could be adopted for, say, 10 years, or how many of our other years that you might want to consider? And it could be by ordinance, limited to transportation purposes, if you chose to adopt such a revenue. The public service tax is certainly less directly related to transportation, but it's becoming a little more related as more and more people use electric cars. So, it's not as directly related as a fuel tax, but it's moving that way. The PST is mainly paid by residents. It's not one that is as affected by visitors. Slide seven. So, let's set aside the fuel tax, set aside the public service tax. How about if we looked at millage? In this case, this graph models an increase in the unincorporated millage of 0.75 mils, which garners about $47 million annually. Well, if we were to keep up with the 812 plan, the deficit in the first year in the unincorporated fund was about $46, $47 million. In this case, looking to the outer years, you see in FY '24, a deficit of minus 14.5. So, what this says is that .75 mils would go a long way to aiding the unincorporated fund. But again, it's keeping up with the transportation plan. It's not necessarily keeping up with, well, in this case, it's not keeping up with additional fire stations beyond the two that we have in the FY '20 budget. Ad valorem, of course, is a general revenue and can pay for a variety of critical services, including safety. It's not particularly well-related to transportation. It's more related to land and residents and the services that they often receive at their home or take advantage of in that capacity, and it's largely paid by residents. So, that's a overview of our five-year plan. Mr. Fessler is going to take you through a look at the adopted, or I'm sorry, the recommended FY '20 budget, and delve a little more deeply into how growth revenues are used for FY '20, and also delve a little more deeply into those revenue options.
Kevin, I just want to point out one thing. So, what Kevin is showing you are revenue options to fix just the 812 million. And John, later, and in the materials he presented you, is going to show you, we have far more transportation needs than the 812 million. So, that's not, that other big part of the iceberg is not being addressed in that five-year period. So, just want to be clear that it solves a big part of the problem, but it doesn't solve the larger problem that the surtax was obviously designed to do. So, just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Very good. Tom?
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Tom Fessler, Financial Services. I had a couple of presentations to run through. As Kevin said, one is a budget overview. You've seen a lot of these slides at the budget delivery last week, so I won't spend a tremendous amount of time on them. We have added a few slides based on some requests that you've had. And then also, I'll go over some revenue options in a little bit more detail on what it would take to implement some of those. On the first slide here, this is just the overall budget, $6.23 billion. So, Hillsborough County does have a very large budget. The thing I wanted to really point out here is we kind of focus in on what we call our cash budget. So, if we exclude transfers and we exclude reserves, which are not dollars that are available to expend in any given budget, reserves are available to spend, but only if you take action and appropriate during the year. The budget that we go into next year would be about $3.5 billion. $2.3 billion of that would be what we would call our operating budget of that amount. About $1.8 billion, we would consider to be restricted, and about $510 million is we consider to be unrestricted. Those are the areas primarily under the County Administrator Organization. We also have our, obviously, our CIP program, our capital budget of $1.1 billion, and debt service. So, that's the amount that we use to pay off our bonds. So, we have commitments out there, and those dollars must go to pay off the bonds. One of the things, this is an addition from what we went over last week, since there's such a large increase in the budget this year on an overall basis, we just wanted to give you an idea of what those differences were. So, the budget did go up from $5.5 billion to $6.2, so about $742 million. Of that amount, reserves went up $433 million. As you can see, capital, $141, and community services, $117, constitutionals, 43, and so on. I'll go over, and just the next few slides, just kind of go over those first three, just to give you an idea what those changes were. Reserve changes, transportation surtax, so $187 million for the new transportation surtax. As I stated last week, we put all those funds currently in reserves. None of those are appropriated for any projects right now. They're basically being set aside. The $187 million represents about 21 months' worth of revenue, as far as what our estimates are. That would be nine months for, the tax was started, you know, started on January 1st of this year through September 30. Those dollars are not available to expand, even in the best case, would have been January of the following year, January of 2020. And then we have another 12 months' worth of revenue for, obviously, October 1st of this year through September 30 next year. So, that's basically almost two years' worth of revenue. Our water and solid waste reserves, both of those amounts went up by about 50 million, a little over $50 million. And then you can see we've got some other changes in reserve balances that are a little bit smaller. General Fund 1, $31 million. Again, that's primarily to keep up with our target of keeping reserves and fund balance somewhere between 20 to 25 percent in the two general funds. Capital changes, we've got our transportation, $111 million. Couple of, this is simply some projects that are, you know, that are moving along, and we're getting to a point where we're starting to make some progress on some of these, so we're budgeting funds in the upcoming year's budget. Some of the big reasons for the increases there would be Big Ben, $43 million. We have, I guess, some university area transportation improvements, $28 million. Apollo Beach overpassed $10 million. Resurfacing program went up $10 million. So, some of, those are some of the larger changes in the transportation area, as far as parks. These primarily relate to the bond issue that you just approved and the capital projects that were approved just several months ago, or a couple of months ago. So, those are things such as ADA, or I'm sorry, those would be things such as synthetic turf, $7 million, LED lights, $4 million. You obviously have a bond issue that you're going to be approving next week for ELAP, $32 million, and some smaller, some other smaller projects. Then we've got government facilities. $14 million of that relates to the new hardened facilities that are coming online. Another $8 million of that, again, relates to the LED light replacement program, and so on. Then we get into some of our community services changes, $117 million. $38 million of that's related to the Inogen Healthcare Fund. So, those are related to the half-cent sales tax on, related to the Inogen Healthcare Program. And then, as we had mentioned to you last week, in the fire rescue area, we are proposing for additional new rescue units in the fire rescue area, along with some, basically keeping up with growth-type activities there. We've got roadway maintenance of 11, some technology improvements. Development services, we've had some explosive growth there that's going on right now, so we're just trying to keep up with that growth. And as I mentioned, a lot of the dollars, or some of the dollars in that area are covered by some offsetting revenues. Now, we kind of get into some of the slides that you saw last week, so I won't spend a tremendous amount of time on these unless you have some questions. Things to point out here in the countywide general fund, $876 million. Almost half of that's related to constitutional officers, boards and outside agencies. $313 million related to the sheriff, which is primarily in the countywide fund, the jail system for the county. Then we've got the county administrator area, that where we've got some budgets primarily related to, like, human services-type functions, pet resources, medical examiner, economic development, mosquito control, and those types of things, where the county provides services on a countywide basis. We've obviously got our reserves, which we, again, are targeting between 20 to 25 percent, and then some other smaller amounts. Unincorporated area fund, again, we've got reserves. The reserve balances here aren't as high as we'd like to see them. And then we've got county administrator departments. The biggest one there, obviously, is fire rescue. So, about $180 million for fire rescue. Our public works department, that $20 million is primarily for stormwater services in this fund. Development services, code enforcement. And then again, the sheriff does represent a fairly big slice of this pie. $146 million for the sheriff, which is basically patrol services in the unincorporated area. We did have some questions that came up related to our general fund reserves, so we wanted to make sure we provided that information back to you. As far as new sources of funds committed to reserves, so basically of the growth money that we had this year, we did set aside an additional $25 million of that growth money in the countywide fund, about $5.5 million in the unincorporated area fund. And then, as far as the reserve percentages, the countywide fund, 25.7, about 18 percent in the unincorporated. On a combined basis, the reserves for the two general funds are 22.6 percent, which is within our policy range that we target of 20, between 20 to 25. One question that came up would be, well, one thing that came up that we wanted to take a look at is, let's say we were to reduce reserve, the reserve percentage, reserve percentage, back down to, let's say, 21 percent from 22.6 percent, and we were to do that on a proportional basis between, and make proportional between the two general funds reserves, so they both had the same percentage at 21 percent. So, to get to 21 percent in the unincorporated area would take, setting aside an additional $14.8 million. In the countywide fund, if we were to go to 21 percent, we could actually reduce reserves by $34.6 million.
Tom, before you go on, I just want to connect a dot here for you. Bonnie sent you a memo last night about the ELAP bonds we're issuing next week, $75 million. The rating agencies largely, one of the key factors they base their rating on is our reserves and our reserve policy. And so, we are scheduled to go to market next week and sell and price bonds. This is the bedrock of why it is we're able to get excellent rates, why we're able to issue more debt and not increase millage. And so, I just want to caution the board that we are in the market, so just like a corporation issues stock, we are going to be in the market. Rating agencies have issued their ratings. We're preparing with our underwriters to issue bonds. So, any substantial changes, or even discussion about this at this point, will risk us having to pull the bonds from the marketplace and readjust our disclosure to rating agencies and to the marketplace, and potentially, that could result in adverse rating action. I've asked our financial advisor, Wendell Gertner, to be here in case you have any questions. We don't have to discuss it now, but as long as Tom's talking about it, there is a real consequence to this. We are doing what we thought the board wanted, which is issue more ELAP bonds, do it at the lowest cost without raising millage. We did that, and this is the reason why we're able to do that. So, I just want to point that out.
To get a clear understanding of that, Mr. Merrill, and layman's
To get a clear understanding of that, Mr. Merrill, in layman's terms, if we take any monies from those reserves, from what I saw Ms. Wise sent out yesterday, last night, or whatever it was, any cash deficit in those reserves has a possibility of dropping our AAA bond rating now in all of our rating agencies. Am I correct?
Yes. So any... Any reduction, at this point, given we're going to market next week, any reduction in reserves, any change in the policy, will mean I will pull those bonds from the marketplace. We will readjust our disclosures to bond investors and to the under, and to the credit agencies, and they will reissue their credit report, and that could be adverse, yes.
Even, let's not even talk about the bonding next week for ELAP. If we did it anyway, even if we weren't doing that, if we decreased that reserve anyway, we have a real serious problem jeopardizing our AAA bond rating. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. It just is more urgent and more present because we're issuing bonds next week, which creates another level of challenge, because when you're in the market, and you've already made disclosures, and everyone is going to be pricing based on that, we can't continue to go to market if there's going to be a change in the underlying credit, so.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So was the issuance of the bonds, the information that was given to the market, was done on projected reserves or on current reserves?
Based on current reserves.
Okay, so the projected reserves wouldn't affect...
And the policy.
I'm sorry?
And the policy, and the board policy.
Right. But, and there's no, I don't think there's anybody trying to change the board policy, but it was done on current reserves, so I, so we wouldn't be changing, I mean, I can't imagine changing current reserves at this time. So if that, if the current reserves weren't changed, then there would, then you would not have to go through this?
Correct. So, yes. And so my, the reason for bringing it up is that we are in a budget reconciliation workshop. As Tom said, reserves are, some of the reserves are available to the board to use for other things. So I'm just cautioning the board, as we go through this workshop, this, that's not something we want to do right now, because you can, it just has consequences, significant consequences to a program that you all feel is important. So that's the reason I'm bringing it up.
Can I just clarify again? So the reason you're bringing it up is so that we wouldn't change the level of reserves we have now, not necessarily the level of reserves for next year?
The reason we're bringing it up is that we don't want to touch the reserves, period.
Both, because the policy, in this budget, that Tom is showing you here, that he just described, the recommended budget includes the additional reserves that are required under your board policy. The board policy is the bedrock of the rating. So, yes, it includes both the reserve amounts today and the reserve amounts for next year, because we're implementing the board policy.
Right.
So I'm not saying you can't do it. You can do it. It just has consequences.
Major consequences.
Yes.
And can the reserves policy be changed, can the amount of reserves, not the policy, be changed at any time? We could change it in two months. We could, huh?
No. Because we're making disclosures to people who are investing in our bonds and the rating agencies in the marketplace, that that's the basis for selling bonds. If we issued bonds next week, and two months from now, we changed the bond, the board policy, we would be in violation of disclosure law.
I didn't say change the board policy.
Well, either way, it doesn't matter. The board policy drives the amounts.
But, but, well, that's not exactly true.
No, it's exactly true.
It gives a window between...
It's exactly true. The board policy specifies what level reserves are to be at. It's not subjective.
Well, it does.
Whoa, 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 we're bringing this in for landing right now, okay? We'll get back to the presentation from Mr., what's her name, McFessler. But we're bringing this in for landing right now. Mr. Merrill has basically said the damage we would do to this county with the present reserves now and the reserves in the future. Please understand that. We have a AAA bond rating, one of the only counties, I think, in the country that has a AAA bond rating, and doggone it, we don't want to rip, we don't want to mess it up. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I absolutely agree that we don't want to mess up our AAA rating. However, our bond policy is the range between 20% and 25%, according to not only what I've heard in the past, but what is reiterated in Ms. Wise's letter. If we're talking about a change from 22 to 21, I'd love to know what the difference in the pricing would be, because we're not violating the policy with the conversation we're having right now.
Thank you.
So while, yes, if we were changing the policy and the reserves below the 20%, if the policy and the pricing is based on the range between 20% and 25%, and we're not below 20%, we are not changing our board policy, nor are we impacting the pricing unless they're doing it based on the current reserve rate. And obviously, reserves change from year to year to year to year. And so, yes, the pricing does matter, and the timing does matter. But we're not talking about going under 20% in this particular conversation. So if, if we are, that's what we need to talk about. But that's not what's being presented on Slide 9 at the moment.
Commissioner Hagen, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be brief, because I jotted down some notes, essentially due to the memo that Ms. Wise disseminated last night. I'm not even sure of the dollar amount or the purpose of considering utilizing reserves, but just let me give you my perspective. And to some degree, I kind of feel like Jan Platt, when she would always take us down memory lane or give us a historical lesson. As Commissioner Miller said, we are among a select number of counties across the country with a AAA credit rating from all three credit agencies. This is extremely rare, and something that we should be very proud of. This is due to the fiscally conservative positions the board has taken through the years, particularly during the economic downturn. A big part of this strategy involves a prudent reserve policy that we've utilized, and the credit agencies take note of that, as highlighted in Ms. Wise's memo regarding the GO bonds for the ELAP program. We view the county's management, it's very strong, with strong financial policies and practices. The county has a formal reserve policy that requires an available fund balance sufficient to cover 20% to 25% of operating expenditures, which it typically meets and exceeds. During the economic downturn, the state and many local governments use reserves and trust funds to balance their budget. Although painless in the short term, it is an extremely unsound financial policy in practice. We didn't do that. We made the very difficult budget decisions, such as eliminating over 1,000 positions without, and Tom or Mike probably knows the exact number, but without using reserves. It was not pleasant. It was extremely painful. But the credit agencies took note of this. And I think it's important to reflect that Hillsborough County not only achieved, but maintained our AAA credit rating during the worst economic recession since the Great Depression. Now, for me, again, as I said at the beginning, the intent or the use of the reserves, which I don't even know what we're considering here, is immaterial. I mean, you could tell me that money's going to go toward one of my priorities, and I would still oppose it because I think it's unwise financial practice. And that's really even before, I felt that way even before I received a memo and heard Mr. Merrill's comments. Certainly, it's our prerogative, but it has consequences, and the timing really could not, it appears could not be worse. So I guess, in summary, from my perspective, if I would not support utilizing our reserves to either balance our budget or to meet our needs during our worst economic crisis in decades, I'm not going to support utilizing this policy or practice now.
Mr. Fessler, continue.
Sure. Commissioners, continuing on with a couple more slides on reserves, this just kind of gives you an idea on a combined basis where we have been over the years with our reserve percentages. You can see, we've been as high as 23%. We first received our first AAA bond rating back in fiscal year, or back in, I think it was December of '06, from S&amp;P. And then, actually, that line is a little bit over. It should be on more in the fiscal year '10 year, but from Fitch and Moody's, we received our AAA bond rating in fiscal year '10. We are one of about, last time we checked, we were one of about 40 counties out of about 3,000 counties on a county, country, you know, across the US, that has a AAA bond rating from all three credit rating agencies. This just gives you an idea per fund, splits it up per fund where we've been percentage-wise. You can see, actually, in the past, the unincorporated fund had a higher percentage, and the countywide had a lower percentage, and then it has, it has switched, as we've had more stress on the unincorporated area fund. We've been through these slides, so I won't spend a lot of time on them, but basically, in the countywide fund, about $90 million, $88 million in new sources. Constitutional officers in the countywide fund take about $22 million of that, remaining funds of 67. Again, setting aside funds for reserves, contributions to the tax increment financing districts for the cities, union contracts and employee compensation, nonprofits. And then we've got, this is where we have $27 million left, and that went to basically some community-type projects, which are listed on the next slide, which you have, which you saw last week, with the various areas that we have allocated some funds. And then we had the new, you've seen this slide also, new finance capital projects. These are part of your bond issue. So we've got replacement fires, we've got a replacement fire station, two new fire stations, LED lighting at 200 buildings within the county, and our government facilities, along with new LED lighting at the parks, an E-factory, synthetic turf fields, and some solar initiatives, along with some parks. Unincorporated area, this is where I want to, you know, really highlight, kind of, this is where we're having our biggest stress. We've got total sources. This is strong growth, $44 million. With strong growth, when you see constitutional officers there, in the unincorporated fund, that is almost entirely the sheriff's office. When we met with the sheriff's office, they indicated they, they have been a good partner with us over the years, very good partner. They've really held the line on things, but they have been telling us at some point, they're going to have to increase the number of deputies. They came in this year and said, this is, you know, fiscal year '20 will be the year, and they're starting to ramp up. They have a six-year plan to add up to 60 new deputies each year over the next six years. So of our growth this year, which was very strong growth, the sheriff is taking 2/3 of that growth. Just to give you an idea, if the sheriff takes 2/3 of our growth each year for the next six years, and, like, for this year, and we were to continue to try to meet the targets of the $812 million transportation policy, we would, we would take about, when we did the calculations, we would take about a third of growth and allocate it towards transportation, if we were to continue to meet the targets. So if the sheriff is taking 2/3, and we were to commit an additional third to transportation, we would have no money left for anything else. That would include, that would include your union contracts for the, for the fire department. We wouldn't be able to keep up with reserves. You've got the affordable housing amount here, we wouldn't be able to afford that, along with various other services in the unincorporated fund, such as parks, code enforcement, development services. You can see that from the previous slide, we have remaining funds of a deficit of 8 million. And again, we've really tried this year to start to try to address some gaps and some deficiencies in some services. That includes, in the fire rescue area, we're trying to make some progress on our master plan there. We have had some deferred maintenance at our parks. We've got issues with some ADA compliance issues at the parks. We're trying to address those. Code enforcement officers, again, right now, we're at one, one code enforcement officer for 45,000 citizens. Our target is, I think, 1,000 to 17,000, or 1,000 to 18,000. So we're trying to make some progress in that area. And then also, in our R3M program, which is our program to maintain our facilities, we realize that we always take a look at, and project out where we think we're going to end up. And we, and we have determined that we needed to kind of bump the percentage that we set aside each year for that program to be able to properly maintain our assets, which left us with a deficit of $31 million, which we funded with a reduction in the transfer to the transportation program. Budget calendar, we're here today at budget reconciliation on July 25. And then we, after this meeting, our next scheduled meetings related to the budget are in September. Those are the two required public hearings, one on September 12, and then we will finally adopt the budget, you will finally adopt the budget on September 19. And then finally, these are some items that have been included in the recommended budget. As we are meeting with commissioners, these are some items that were identified for inclusion in the budget, so these are included in the recommended budget. As we go through today, I guess what we're proposing as far as the flagging process is, we're trying to keep it somewhat informal. In the past, in prior years, we've had it where the flagging process would require that, you know, there'd be a second to any commissioner flag. We've kind of done away with that the last few years. If a commissioner has identified an item for consideration, then we've let the entire board vote on that. That's what we're suggesting that you do today. So if you wanted to identify items, we'll, you know, we'll just accumulate all those items. There can be board discussion on them, and then we would just, you know, say that if there's a simple majority vote to approve items, that they would be added to the budget before the September public hearings. Actually, in the past couple of years, I think, for the most part, you've kind of voted on a majority of them in kind of a bundle, as opposed to even doing it on a one-by-one basis. With that, I think I've got my second presentation that I'd like to go through. This one won't take very long.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I'll let it go. I thought that that was the end, and we were supposed to suggest, I'll let it go to the next presentation. We'll do...
Okay. Continue, Mr. Fessler.
Commissioner Overman, last week, you had requested that we kind of go over the revenue options. Kevin kind of covered those a little bit. We wanted to go over them in a little bit more detail, and kind of let you know what one might be involved in implementing some of these if you're interested. So we just wanted to, you know, just quickly go through some options that you might have in creating some additional revenues to address some needs. So primarily, what those options are would be the communication services tax, the additional fuel tax, which obviously, you're, you've got, had some agenda items on, you're moving down the road on that one, public services tax, and then finally, Advalore Millage. As far as the communication services tax, currently, the county has that levied at 4%. It's in the unincorporated area. We can go up to 5.22%. If we were to do that, we would create about another $6 million, almost $6 million in revenue that could be used in the unincorporated area. That applies to telecommunications services and some other services. It can be done by ordinance. It would take three board meetings to complete. If it were to become effective, it would have, it would have to become effective on January 1, and if that were to happen, you'd have to basically notify the Department of Revenue by September 1. So in other words, if that one is something that's selected today, we would really have to start moving on that very quickly to get it implemented. That would, just to give you an idea, on a $100 cell phone bill, it would add about Total revenue that we're currently collecting on that is about, close to $20 million. And again, if we went up to the max, we could increase that by about $6 million. And then we also have taken a look kind of at what some other counties are doing. You can see that a lot of them are at the max. Some of them are not. The revenues kind of fluctuate significantly between the counties, but that's because it's related to their unincorporated area. So if you look at some, some county like Broward, they have very little unincorporated area. That's why you see the big fluctuations in some of those revenues. The local option fuel tax, so we can go up to five cents. It would generate close to $30 million at the five cent level. Applies to motor fuel sold within the county, excludes diesel fuel. Requires basically a supermajority vote to implement. It can be authorized by ordinance. So again, it would take three meetings. A little bit more time on that one, we could, it just would need to be voted on and approved by, and notify the Department of Revenue by October 1. And then we would enter into interlocal agreements with the, basically, the cities on how the funds would be distributed. And then 15 gallon purchase of fuel, it would result in an increase of about 75 cents. of fuel, it would result in an increase of about 75 cents. Again, 1 penny is about 6 million. The total's about 30. And then it just, basically, shows how the funds would, would be distributed. With about $20 million coming to the county if we went to the full 5 cents. And then again, wanted to give you an idea of what some other counties are doing. You can see that Broward, Palm Beach, Pasco, and Polka are at 5 cents, and then Orange, Pinellas, and Duval do not levy at all. Public services tax, we can go up to 10%. We estimate that it could generate up to $80 million. It's probably somewhere between 60 to 80 million. We kind of look at Orange County as a very comparable county to us. They're generating about $74 million right now. It applies to electric, fuel, oil. Just requires a majority vote of the board, again, by ordinance, three meetings. Approved levies can begin at the beginning of any calendar quarter, as long as we give 120 days' notice. So that can be done at various times throughout the year. 10% tax on a $100 electric bill would obviously be $10. Revenue per 1 cent, 6 to 8 million. In total, 60 to 80. And this is what some of the other counties are doing. Pinellas and Pasco do not levy, but some of our other comparable counties do levy at the full, full amount. City of Tampa does levy at the full amount. Advalora Millage, you can see on a countywide basis, fiscal year 20 levy is about $600 million, based on our current millage rate. Unincorporated's $274 million. And this just gives you an idea at various levels of increased millage, the additional revenue that could be generated. 1 mil on a home, on a home that's assessed at $250,000, after you consider the homestead exemption, would be an increased cost to that homeowner of And then, this is my last slide. We just wanted to, just quickly give you some things to think about. Let's say the transportation surtax was invalidated, and then we were left, again, left with a hole for transportation. Some options that you could consider, and Kevin went over some of these, public services tax for 10 years, committing the proceeds to transportation. You could move our affordable housing commitment from the unincorporated area to the countywide fund. That could create some additional resources. You could reduce some of the countywide millage, and by doing that, you would basically be decreasing taxes for incorporated area or city residents, and then the cities could actually increase their millage as an offset, and help to provide some funding for transportation within the city limits. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. We're available for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Merrill?
Our last presentation will be John, on transportation.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I just have a real quick question, based on the presentation you just made. So let's just say we did it all. I mean, not that I'm suggesting we do that, but, other than raise the millage. Because currently, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Tampa's millage rate is 6.2%?
That's correct.
Okay. And we are at 5.739 currently?
4.3745.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I think it's 4.3745 in the unincorporated area, which would be comparable to a city millage.
Well, that's my point. We have, basically, unincorporated is the, you know, the city of, as I've heard Commissioner Kemp use, you know, the city of unincorporated Hillsborough County, providing comparable services to what the city of Tampa is trying to do in a much smaller area, a smaller population, but still the same burden and financial responsibility and fiscal burden that we've done by not raising the unincorporated millage rate. So, and we, in your presentation, you showed us where there were several scenarios where other counties of similar, or larger, or comparable size, that have developed to a place where there are sort of rural areas have become more suburban areas with more people in them, which require more services and infrastructure and, and needs, have raised various different usury taxes, like the, the public services and the communications. Those, those fees are basically usury fees that help offset our cost. And we haven't raised those. So, with the exception of the millage increase, which if we raised it a small amount, not a full mil, but a half, which would cover the 31 million deficit that we're trying to wrestle with now to not jeopardize our bond rating, if we did all the other usury fees, would we cover that deficit? In your best estimate, based on the numbers that you projected? It sounds like, based on the numbers you were alluding to.
I think, I think we'd have to, we'd have to have, probably have a discussion on what types of services we would, we were looking at covering. So then we'd be back to the conversation about transportation, and whether it's funded by the general funds, or whether it's funded by the surtax, and how that works. And then we've got our fire rescue master plan. You know, the question there would be, the master plan was projecting that we needed, I think it was, 25 new fire stations over the next 12 years or so. Actually, the cost to build those stations is not our biggest issue. We could probably figure that out. It's the cost of operating them that's the biggest problem, which is about $4 million a year per station. So, you know, 25 new stations, if they were to come online next year, would be another $100 million in budget. So...
Well, and I, and I understand where you're going with this. My experience working with the budgets in the city many years ago, was that the millage never covered fire rescue and law enforcement then, for the city. So we're not an anomaly. We've, they have had to be creative about where they've added usury fees to help supplement, and enterprise, change their enterprise fee structure to address the services that are necessary for water, stormwater, and other things. So while I know there's a great resistance to raising millage, our millage rate is quite low compared to our neighbor that's within our county, that is providing the level of services that are necessary, that we are trying to do as well. So while I hate raising taxes any more than anybody else does, we have to address the fact that we're running at a much lower rate than the services demand. And I think that's why it's important for us to have the conversation of these usury taxes as supplementing, if, if the resistance against millage increase at all, is part of the conversation we're having today. I think that's an important part of this equation, and I appreciate you bringing those, that information back. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure, for the new commissioners, when we got things, just to be clear, like the fire master plan, first of all, what was said about operations is so true, because we seem to only consider the cost of capital, which is the easiest thing to cover. It doesn't. But the second thing is, it was a massive expansion into the, outside of the urban service area, is what that was all about. So a lot of these master plans were generated with that as a basis. And I think those may want to, and I, and I pointed that out when they were presenting these, and talking about, the stations that we're doing now are both within the urban service area. But I think that those might want to be reviewed with the new, with the board as it is now, with the kind of, I think, consideration that we want to really look at what we're doing outside. So I just wanted to kind of clarify on that in terms of what is being said about deficits for roads, and deficits for fire stations, and everything else.
Mr. Merrill?
So the fire master plan is based on existing deficiencies. It's not based on growth. The existing deficiencies were a result of the growth. But those 25 stations are not to serve future growth. Those are existing deficiencies. We have other options that I've raised in the past to building 25 fire stations. We've already used some of those options successfully, such as roving squads, because 85% of our calls are medical, not fire. That could reduce the number of fire stations. It's another way to address the issue. The issue is not the fire station, or the vehicles, it's the response time. So the response time needs to decrease. In your materials, there are what's called service scorecards for all of our services. There's one for fire rescue that shows that our response times across the board, whether it's urban, suburban, or rural, are below where they need to be. To improve response times, you don't always have to build fire stations. We've had roving squads in the university area that have improved response time without building a new station. Now, you do have to build more stations, because even roving squads have to be tethered, and be able to go to resupply and so forth. But either way, there is a large amount of cost to cure the deficiencies in our fire rescue. Again, not talking about future growth, talking about existing response time failures. And so I just want to be sure that, that's clear here.
Commissioner Murley, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I just want to ask a question, because, you know, we've talked about these options for many years, and I've been in favor of a few. One I'm definitely not in favor of is raising millage, because that's the holy grail. And, you know, people out there enjoy living in Hillsborough County, because our taxes are low, and their property taxes are low. And so unless we're prepared for a change in that direction, I, I absolutely could never support raising property taxes, because I think there's other options. But I do want to ask you, the reason we're really discussing these options, the root of the problem is the transportation, right? Is that correct?
Well, it's transportation in the sense that we're using property taxes to pay for transportation. It's also the demand from, of other services, public safety, affordable housing, go through the list. So it's really the combined effect of it. But transportation, a big part of it could be solved with a dedicated funding source for transportation. And I think, you know, Commissioner Overman, you're absolutely right, that we are, we, whether it's countywide or unincorporated, we are way too dependent on property taxes, and that puts us at risk in a recession. So it's like as if you were running a business, and 70% of your revenue came from one customer. If that customer moves, you're not in a good position. So using, using user fees, any one of those, is a way to help blend down your revenue mix and be less at risk. So the city of Tampa did that years ago, when they levied the public service tax. It generates a potful of money for them. They still have had to raise millage, but their millage would have gone up even further without, I guess they get 60 million a year?
They get about, I thought it was, yeah, about 30.
Yeah, so, or 30. But, so, so it is, there are a lot of things to keep in mind here, as we choose different revenue mixes. But a lot of it comes back to whether the surtax will be available, and how we want to use it. Clearly, if the surtax is invalidated, the problem becomes more urgent, and it becomes a much bigger hole to fix. Probably, maybe with multiple funding sources, some of them limited in duration, dedicated, and so forth. But, yeah, it's...
Okay, can I just, quick follow-up. So are we going to hear from you today, really, what we need, bottom line for transportation every year, to help make ends meet?
Yeah. So John is going to show you the 10-year needs. So we, we've talked about the 812 million. The 812 million is just a subset of the larger needs. And so there was a lot of confusion about, what is our transportation plan? All kinds of different, you know, agencies that get involved. What I asked John to do was, just tell the board, from your professional point of view, what is our total transportation needs? So that would include everything that's in the CIP today. It would include projects that have come to us through the MPO. So the MPO generates projects on their own, without our input. And some of those should be accounted for. There are a number of projects over the years that constituents and commissioners have asked to be considered, so that's in the pot. So he put everything in the pot, and is going to show you the comprehensive transportation needs for the next 10 years. And you will then need to revisit that, and decide, do you want to keep some of them? Do you want to add more? But that then becomes aligned to our revenues. And so what you'll see is that, even with the surtax, over 10 years, because of the limitations in the way it can be spent, there still is a shortfall, which will require additional revenues, if you want to build out the full plan. We don't have to build out the full plan. But, but that's the way we want to present it to you. So everything's on the table, all the revenues, all the projects, you can pick and choose, you can move things around. But in the end, it is going to have a material impact on, primarily, the unincorporated fund. There are going to be, so, the good thing is, we have lots of options. So there are surpluses, as Kevin showed, in the countywide general fund over the next few years. Those could be used to relieve significant affordable housing needs in our community. So I would recommend that the, the surpluses in the countywide fund be used strategically, then to relieve some of the costs that would otherwise be borne by the unincorporated fund for affordable housing. And that would be a better way to utilize those countywide surpluses, and, in strategic ways. Another option would be to use it for affordable housing, and also reduce the millage in the countywide fund. That would allow the cities to increase their millage, if they wanted to, and not increase the overall millage for their, for their, their citizens. We've always wanted the city of Tampa to take over the maintenance of county roads. If we reduced our countywide millage, and gave them some margin to work with, and said, here, take, take the maintenance back, we'll bring the roads up to a standard, but take them back. That would be another way to strategically use the surpluses in the countywide fund. So a lot, we have options, and it's just kind of understanding what we're trying to solve here. So I hope that helped.
Oh, yeah.
Long answer.
Although for the, reducing the millage to pay for those county roads.
Let me ask you a question. Since we're talking about reduce the millage, and it's the holy grail, from 2012 fiscal year budget to 2019 fiscal year budget, we have reduced the millage. Am I correct, a number of times?
I believe most years, I think there were, the last few years, we might have had, been holding it steady.
But how much have we reduced the millage those, those years? You have any idea?
I would have to take a look, Commissioner. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Could you, could you take a look at that, and then tell us how much that millage reduction was over those years, and bring it back to us?
Sure.
I don't care, Ms. Murley. It's millions of dollars. It's millions of dollars. You want to say something, Ms. Wise? I thought you said, okay. Could you do that for me?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I do like looking at our alternatives, making sure it makes sense. And I do appreciate that our residents in unincorporated Hillsborough County like having a lower millage rate. But I will tell you, they lose their minds when we talk about... But, I will tell you, they lose their minds when we talk about reducing services because we may need to renegotiate a contract. For example, the inaccurate report we got this week regarding solid waste and handling our recycling and all that, you know, God, we should not actually, you know, reduce services to impact the fact that there may be a change in the amount of services and a cost. Not saying we're doing that, it's not happening, but it wasn't a survey question. And so, while it is important to recognize that people choose to live in unincorporated county because it's less expensive, they also, with that comes less services. Unless we find ways that we can use usury fees to help pay for that. And usury fees unfortunately are regressive, I don't particularly care for them, but they are a function of paying for things. So, while I don't disagree with the idea of using possibly countywide funds for affordable housing where we can partner with the city on addressing not only our affordable housing challenges, but also build affordable housing that is in concert or in line with our growth plan. You know, we've historically built in areas that we can't afford to provide the infrastructure. Whereas, if we create an opportunity to partner with the city on affordable housing efforts that are in denser areas, that helps support smart transportation planning, then we can probably get where we need to go in many ways. But, to your point about fire safety and failing the standards, we also have in South County, I'm getting emails from people that work and live and provide services in our healthcare area in South County that are complaining about the fact that the roads are so badly designed and constructed in that area that they're putting people's lives at risk to getting to the medical centers in those areas. That's a failure too. So, we do need to invest in transportation. That's why I continue to ask about, you know, what is on our transportation agenda list and how much can we afford to do in a year? That's our budget. I don't care whether it comes from SRTAC or whether it comes from an unincorporated county or in any way. If our plan, you know, for developing a transportation strategy includes investing in a good way and addressing what we need to do in transportation, and our annual project list capacity for managing that process is in the 30 to 40 million dollar range, then whether or not we have 110 million, or 50 million, or 80 million, or 400 million, we can't manage 400 million dollars worth of projects on an annual basis. So, generating the revenue to protect our rating, our reserves, and to find a more reliable tax revenue is going to be important. And a strategy that actually gives us the diversification of income stream, as Mr. Merrill mentioned, we don't want one client paying for everything. And as a business owner, I understand that concept quite well. But, I do think it's important for us to look at these other income streams in combination with our financial responsibility and how we manage our cost. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, and I was glad to hear Mr. Merrill remind us that this is an opportunity to learn the lessons of the, from the past as we move forward about how the deficit in unincorporated county occurred. And, so that while we're figuring out how to fill the hole that we have in that deficit, we stop digging the hole any deeper. It's clear we need a major change in our land use at the same time we're wrestling with how to, how to meet our responsibilities in providing services and infrastructure. And the deficit was caused not just by growth, but especially by sprawl. And it's not just in the past, it's continuing to come forward to us right now in two per acre proposals outside the urban service area. That low-density sprawl outside the urban service area and even, you know, inside in the low-density subdivisions, that's what costs us the most in transportation, infrastructure, you know, I'm sure we're going to talk about that, but widening roads is 20 to 30 million dollars a mile. Transit is where we, you know, where it makes sense, is much, much cheaper, but it's not going to make sense out halfway between Wy Mama and Fort Lonesome for a long, long time. So, that kind of infrastructure, fire, spreading our fire stations out far enough to lower the response time through, you know, very low-density sprawl is much more expensive than infill and concentrating our growth where we have infrastructure and we can put, we can serve them with fewer fire stations, schools, where we already have roads in place and can now add to the transit. It's also clear that this recent deficit, relatively recent deficit in the unincorporated area compared to, it was, there was some time ago that we had much more in the unincorporated area, and I remember that quite well because people in South County were complaining about being a donor to the incorporated area and not getting their money's worth and threatening to incorporate themselves so they could manage their money more, better than they perceived the county to be managing it. So, but since then, we've gotten this deficit, and I think it's quite clear that it's an, we've left the municipal, the MSTU taxes, the unincorporated taxes artificially low. They're not covering the services. We can't afford to pay for the services with, by, with those, that millage rate that has been kept so much lower than the incorporated area is paying. 6.2 mills in Tampa compared to 4.37 in the unincorporated, and as we've said, expecting the same services. That's, that's been kept artificially low for political reasons. It's not paying the bills. Sure, it makes the unincorporated area more attractive to growth, which is only exacerbating the problem if we have, if we're giving them a, you know, something for nothing. I, I have been asking since I saw these budgets, why the new $10 million affordable housing is coming out of the unincorporated area? I've asked Mr. Fessler and Mr. Brickie and been trying to look into what would be the justification for that. And with the stress we're seeing relative in the unincorporated to the incorporated, I think that that is low-hanging fruit to take, put that $10 million countywide, particularly since we really want the affordable housing to go in the urban core and contribute to the cities. And to put affordable housing near jobs and services, near transit hubs, which are going to be in the urban core so that, you know, the cities will be benefiting from that and can pay their share of that. So, I was glad to hear Mr. Merrill suggesting that right now because I think that's a simple thing we should do right away. Thanks.
We're going to recognize Commissioner Kip, we're going to move on with the presentations. Commissioner Kip, you recognize?
Oh, I didn't, I'm getting confused, I'm thinking the presentations are completed now.
No, we're not.
Okay. Again, we'll, I just want to concur with Commissioner Smith on that. I'd ask the same thing about why it isn't. I couldn't understand any justification for having it in the unincorporated budget, and maybe that can be addressed in some way. But, I'll just, because it was raised, let me just go for this. The millage swap, which I was assured was not out there, but we just heard a version of it, and I just want to remind commissioners that the millage swap in my, how I look at that is, it would be a disaster. What we would be doing is taking a greater amount of money that we get from the county and it is going to the services that we care about. Social services, it funds our social services, it funds our mental health services, it funds our adult daycare, our foster care, our sunshine line, Head Start, homeless initiatives. We're talking about if the jails were to expand and the constitutional officers were being pushed to support the court systems, those things could just start to eat up everything. We would not have this if we were ever to lower the millage or do, essentially, a millage swap that would, you know, really put beyond, and also, by the way, economic development, pet resources, other things that people care about. So, I also concur with, I would never want to do that. That, I do think that's taking food out of the mouths of seniors, so, just want to make that clear.
Mr. Fessler, you recognize, continue. Are you done? Ms. Lyons?
I am not Mr. Lyons. Lucia Garcia, Deputy County Administrator for Infrastructure and Development. Before John comes up, I would just like to say that we have heard you say a number of things as it relates to transportation. We have heard you talk about Vision Zero, complete streets, breaking down silos, seeing cross-sections of what complete streets and Vision Zero-related road networks might look like. We've heard you ask questions of how does transportation relate to where affordable housing is? How does it relate to our job centers? And so, in your memo that transmitted the materials from Mr. Merrill, there was a statement that said, "We anticipate workshops coming up." And so, what we would like to offer is a workshop on August the 15th that would begin to bring this material, it is on your calendar scheduled as a workshop now, that would begin to bring these, begin to tie these pieces together. There's been a lot of work that's been done on trails that we think is important for you to see. Some of the work that was introduced by Cutter in the, looking at travel alternatives that are non-vehicular in South County, we think is an important piece to bring back, identifying where our job centers have been, where the spine and the spine network is. There's an effort underway that has been requested by this board that as we embark on the development of new roads, that we look at the, what's called PDNE in a different way, that we begin to look at what do the land uses on that road mean? What is the traffic shed? And there's one project in particular that I think might be of interest to you that is with 131st Street from 41 to 30th. And in that particular exercise, there was a lot of work done that looked at the connections to 22nd, the pedestrian connections, how many people walk, where's the streetlights? What are the streetlights doing? Where's the crime? And so, it begins to look at a roadway in a very different, in a different manner. And so, our suggestion then is that we schedule on August 15th, the first of a series of workshops, and we'll flesh those out for you of what they would look like, that really begin to articulate, what do these projects look like in community plans? What are they doing to enhance communities? I know there's conversations happening about community plans in Wy Mama and in Gibsonton, really articulating what are the, what are the alternatives for travel patterns in those communities as well? So, with that, I just wanted to provide that overview before we moved into the conversation of what John has to offer is to bring back materials on August the 15th and start structuring a series of workshops for you.
Ms. Lyons?
Me, wait.
We have presentations.
A question for Lucia.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, and when you bring this to us on August 15th, I just would like to make sure that you're bringing back what I had asked for at the very first land use meeting, which haven't seen yet, several months ago, or a few months ago. And that is some of the development that's already in the pipeline, which I was adding up to over 10,000 houses that are not there yet, but we know they're coming, just around 301 and 674. And so, I'd like a fuller picture of what's coming and, you know, what kind of room we have inside the urban service area as well.
I think absolutely that piece is being worked on. The pieces that I did forget that are in my notes is you've also asked for network, you want to see what the network looks like. So, I think that's the, that's a baseline starting analysis. And of course, in my notes also, I have the transit component. And that will take some time in working with Hart and Benjamin Limerick to understand where their primary corridors are going to be and how that will all work together. So, it won't be all the answers on August 15th, but I think we need to begin the conversation in layering all of these pieces of information that have been of interest to you that will go beyond what John has today.
Commissioner Overman, you want it now or are you after the presentation?
I'll make it very quickly. In relation to what Ms. Garcia said and what's coming in the way of Mr. Lyons' presentation, I think what I'm seeing is a disconnect in my brain on how we're classifying our transportation projects. So, for example, the project you just described that addresses 22nd Street, I would have, not as a capacity project or a five project, you know, bucket five, it would be in a different classification. So, and since we have different buckets and how that fits our budget, I think that what you're bringing to us on the 15th and what the work that John's doing is hugely valuable because it addresses our overall growth strategy and our affordable housing strategy as well. So, thank you very much for the work you're doing. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kip, you want to wait now?
I'll just have one more comment about, I'm glad that you're having Ben Limer and Hart in. I would just like to say that I see, and I've said that we need a huge expansion, that Mission Max pretty much destroyed the transit that was in the university area. And at the Hart Board, I've been talking about the need to restore unbelievably that we don't have a route along Fowler Avenue and we don't have a route along Fletcher. And it's been, the integrity of what's going on there now, I think, is under flux. So, I just want to make sure that's accounted for because Mr. Limer also doesn't have necessarily that history. So, anyway, I'll talk to you about that, but I'm glad to hear that's part of it because I think that's a critical part of it.
Ms. Lyons, jump in here quick.
Conversation weekend.
Good morning. John Lyons, Public Works Administrator. I think there's been a good introduction, so I'll just jump right in in the interest of time. So, we've brought this slide to you before where our focus is on safety, preservation, congestion relief. It's a multimodal system, it ties into the regional network and there's many funding sources, so it's a complex, it's a complex process to build. There's always a balance between needs and funding, and there's an evaluation and prioritization process that includes the Vision Zero processes we move ahead. We always continue to collaborate with all those agencies that have been mentioned, but I mean, I mean, real briefly, I won't go into each of these, but we collaborate and coordinate weekly, daily, monthly, quarterly, annually with all these folks at some point or another. And for many different reasons, it's, you know, it could be with the sheriff's office over crossing guards one day, or it could be an issue with crashes or some, you know, lighting issue or something else in a different manner as well. So, it's not, it's not one subject, one collaborator, it's multiple subjects with multiple collaborators, and these teams work together closely, I believe. There's always opportunities to improve that collaboration as well as we move ahead. The comprehensive transportation plan that I'm going to go over takes into consideration things that are in the long-range transportation plan. There's components with that plan that we work very closely with DOT, or with the MPO on. They're balancing the needs of every agency, including FDOT across the entire county and Hart as well. The transportation development plan, the five-year look ahead for some, you know, available funding for doing that, and as Lucia mentioned, you know, integrating affordable housing, land use, and economic development with that. So, the comprehensive transportation plan will incorporate all that as it evolves. And, so, what we're getting ready to look at is really what's in the current adopted CIP, what's in the recommended budget. And then, we've also presented a transportation plan looking at 10 years. We've had the initial cut of priorities with regard to looking at safety. For example, the 50-some intersections that are listed in here were screened based on crashes. There's further work that has to be done to look at the opportunity to not only improve There's further work that has to be done to look at the opportunity to not only improve the safety of those intersections, but also look at alternatives for, you know, inclusion of transit, congestion relief and all those. So these things don't happen in a vacuum. They don't happen very quickly. They're not overnight decisions. You know, we've been looking, you know, we were made aware of this funding less than nine months ago. You know, we're using existing resources to work through these processes. And when the money does become available, there will be some planning. But the approach, the approach to the program as it's implemented will be to look at those projects that we can work on quickly. So projects such as, we have a great need of sidewalk repairs. So it's not a constant over 10 years that we're going to allocate X dollars to each program. It's a variable that's based on timing, the time it takes to develop and implement projects. You know, road widening project or a complete street project could take up to five to six to seven years from concept to final project closeout. Other projects, we can go into neighborhoods, we can go on to main roads and implement resurfacing a little bit quicker, sidewalk repairs, those traffic signal and intersection upgrades. You know, a lot of those things can be front-end loaded a little bit. And that, that work yet has to be done. Safety's always a great consideration in that, filling in those sidewalk gaps, working on that. Pretty much everything that we do is a process required to go through in engineering. And if we have to hire consultants, we have to go through a statutory requirement to hire those consultants. We just can't pick one off the list and go to work tomorrow in some projects. So there's, there's a process that behind that and it consumes time. When we get the land acquisition, that process takes a while. It's, you know, it's statutory, it's a very legal process, and our county attorney's office could speak to that with the level of detail. But there's a lot of detailed work that goes into that to make sure that we've, you know, checked all the boxes, looked at appropriate alignments, minimized environmental impacts, and we really have a good project to stand up before it gets challenged in court for right-of-way acquisition. So in this comprehensive transportation plan, the grand total needs when we take the existing CIP and add in a 10-year proposed plan approaches $2.58 billion. And that includes those categories that we talked about, where we're really covering the whole gamut of things that we've always done and we're continuing to do with the SRTAX money as well. The $2.58 billion also includes about $250 million, $249 million spent to date. The $961 million is in the existed, it's in the recommended CIP for FY '20 through '25. And an additional $1.37 billion of projects and programs recommended in the next 10 years. And as I mentioned, those would be based upon a prioritization process, looking at what we would do first initially because they're easier to do, the resurfacing, those type of projects. The funding source options that we're going to lay out as well, we're looking at a couple, three options to match up to the plan that we're presenting. Say, one option would include the sales SRTAX, one option would include the five cents additional fuel tax, and also there's, Tom had a conversation about what the public service tax would generate. And we're also looking at an option of the sales, the SRTAX and the fuel tax together. These programs and projects included, as Mike mentioned, you know, we're looking at best practices, the MPO system modeling, they're looking at the entire transportation network across the county, they're looking at every roadway segment and modeling that. So there are collaborations across all the agencies again. We've had numerous projects that have been requested by the board and constituent requests, you know, things that are wanted in their neighborhoods and in those areas as well. And also collaboration with other agencies. We have a great relationship with FDOT. There's a great amount of collaboration that's going on on the I-75 Big Bend interchange. We believe we've cut about two years out of that project schedule. If it would have taken the old typical design, build, bid process going through federal highway, that would have probably taken us another seven to eight years in total. Working with DOT, they've come up with a creative way that what they're going to do, design, build project, and they're fast-tracking that through federal highway. And we think we can get it done within the next five years in collaboration with them down at that interchange. So this list of projects that you see is for 10 years, as I mentioned. It includes information out of the recommended CIP book that you were all provided last week. And we've also thrown in the additional capital needs associated with the 10-year plan that would be generated by these different revenue sources. In some cases, we're taking existing projects and programs and we're expanding those, so there's additional money in the resurfacing program as an example, signal and, you know, signal and traffic device repairs, those type of programs, so those are expanded as well. There are also projects on here, new programs that would be new projects that haven't been funded previously. So in slide number eight, we talk about complete street corridor projects, about $285 million recommended in there. Safe routes to schools, additional funding in those categories and a lot more money for trail projects as well. So the funding implications are, and we broke this out by the SRTAX categories to, you know, just for consistency at this point. So if the additional needs are funded only with SRTAX projects, SRTAX proceeds, the surplus in revenues in categories one through four amount to about $125 million. We have a deficit in category five of about $400 million, which would impact those road widening projects. And when we say road widening projects, you know, I think, I think that's a little bit of a misnomer. Within those road widening projects, there will be, there will be incorporation of Vision Zero principles, there will be accommodation for bicycles and pedestrians. Typically, these roads are high-volume, high-speed. We would recommend through a change in cross-sections that we probably bring back some examples of in August, that would show that the bicycles are off the roads, on their own separate paths, and it's going to require a little bit of wider footprint for those projects as well. So there, yes, they are road widening and expansion projects, but they include consideration for bicycles, pedestrians, and Hart will be a big partner in that effort as well. If we do the fund, if we only, if the SRTAX weren't there and we only had funding with the five cent fuel tax, we would have a deficit across all categories, 808 in one, in categories one through four, and a deficit of about $361 million in SRTAX category five. And it would impact us greatly. We would not be able to deliver the program that we have a concept of right now. If we add the SRTAX and the five cent fuel tax together, we have a surplus in revenues of $125 million, and that's because we basically said we'll put that five cent gas tax or fuel tax within category five. The reduction in revenue deficit in category five goes from $400 million down to about $196 million. This chart kind of overlays those specifically by those three examples we just kind of walked through. And it shows those specifically, how it's impacted in those categories. This is an example project that, just as an example, Tom had mentioned about, you know, future growth revenues or anything else. Typically, right now, this is an existing project, the Bridge and Guard Rail Program, which is replacing bridges and working on that. There's specifically a line item within the budget for the sources within a CIP book of financing that's necessary because those future revenue sources haven't been identified yet. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Murwin, do you have a question now?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask a quick question because we've been talking for a long time with Hart about doing these circulators at USF and then down in South County. And actually, they've already done the studies for them. MPO and, and I guess Planning Commission came together, they funded, and where, where is that on any list? I, I'm like, you know, that's, that's the important connector to get people in the university area in South County around without having to use their cars on the roads, like Big Bend and all that. They could use public transportation. And I'm not advocating for big buses to be down there to do this. Smaller vehicles could actually be a great option for that. But are they included anywhere in this transportation plan or?
They're not included specifically within our program, but there are that collaborating partner that we would be working with. So as an example, on Big Bend Road, they would be reviewing the plans and making suggestions for bus pullouts, bus stops, any of those type of things.
The funding for those, for the South County, the funding is going to Hart because Hart is going to work with the enterprising Latinas on that one.
Right. That, but that one only goes down 674, doesn't go down 301 Big Bend and up 41.
Right. So that wouldn't, that, that was already approved by the board, that wouldn't be in our plan because we're giving the money to Hart to work with them. Likewise, for the university area, we're contributing money along with FDOT and others to fund the university circulator. So it's really not our project, but we're providing funding to other agencies to complete them, so.
And those do show up as a line item within the CIP.
Okay. Well, for you Hart Board members, this is a priority. And that study was done five years ago. And honestly, this is part of why Pinellas County works so much better because all of their commissioners sit on Hart. We don't. We have only four. And so I'm just saying, you know, there are little things we can do now to help alleviate some of these congestion situations. And I have some other questions, but I'll wait till after the other comments are made. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question and comment. On page 10 of the funding implications regarding the deficit in revenues for the SRTAX category five, the bullets in all three of the funding scenarios, I'm assuming that you're utilizing or including the current bucket allocations.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
As I said last week, there are, there are limitations with the transit SRTAX plan and we should consider reallocating the categories in an effort to, to meet our road needs. Question I have, do we, do we still have an opportunity to do that at a future meeting or a public hearing or when we move forward on, on the plan?
Are you talking about the, the ordinance and the buckets and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be coming back to the board to set the public hearing, and at that time, we will have a draft of the ordinance. I think at, we're asked, I think because of various commissioner's schedules, we're looking at bringing that back on September 7th to set the public hearing for the 21st is the plan. But yes, you would have the ability to review the ordinance and.
Okay. I mean, I know we voted last week to maintain the, the original bucket allocations, but in addition to the revenue projections of utilizing the fuel tax, I would also like to see the impact of altering the category allocations to meet our road resurfacing and widening needs in addition to all of our sidewalk needs. I may be all alone on that, but that's what I would like to see at one of those meetings.
So just if we took the 10-year plan, allocate it to rebalance it based on what the needs are?
Yeah, and as I said last week, I don't have, I don't have the answers. I don't know what the magical formula is, but I do know that there are limitations with the plan and there are significant funding shortfalls with respect, particularly with respect to our road needs. And so if we were to reallocate in some manner without not targeting any particular bucket or, you know, looking to gut anything, but if we were to do that, play with it, you know, what would the impact be on our unfunded road needs and sidewalk needs for that matter?
Yes.
So again, I don't, I don't have the answers. I don't know the magic formula, but I know we can do better. That I do know.
So, so I think that kind of ties into, you know, timing as well. So some projects you can move faster on, others take time to, to play out. If we're, if we're fixed on certain criteria within the allocation, that could change timing of projects based on those allocations becoming available.
And maybe those allocations change over time. I mean, I don't know. I mean, maybe there are a certain percentage now, but a year or two from now, as needs change, maybe, maybe they're altered. Again, I, admittedly, I don't have the answers, but I think that's something that we should consider.
Commissioner Kip, you recognize?
Are we going to have a list prepared for the independent oversight committee that is still for September 30th? Is this still for one year?
The MPO sent us a email this week saying they're canceling the IOC meetings until after the Supreme Court decides, so that, that was their call.
Actually, the charter language still requires a plan to go to the IOC. We have to have our plan done by September 30th, and then, then it has to go to the IOC. I don't think there's a hard timetable for when the IOC considers it, but we would still be preparing a plan.
So, so, wait, because this wasn't raised at the MPO meeting, so I just don't understand how, I mean, you got a letter from Ms. Alden just saying this is canceled. I mean, I just would like, I think we'll seriously need a legal opinion on that. As I read it, it's still in the, you know, the language as it exists now, so, and I don't see, again, the language in the, the court. One thing they said was it was in the, it's in this board's authority. So again, I'm, I'm really questioning if that has been made, some kind of decision.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the letter, but it might have been a meeting that was set, I'm just speculating, too early and it's, it's too soon to put them in through a meeting until we have something to discuss via the plan.
But, but it does say in the charter by September 30th.
That, that we have to have our plan. And then, so technically, the IOC could look at it in October or November, because remember, you can't spend the money until 2020.
Right. I thought it had to be approved by September 30th. Okay, I guess we have to have some assessing out of this because I'm concerned.
Yeah, let me just make sure Sam agrees with me, is that the, the IOC can look at it after September 30th. Okay, so that's what the charter would allow. So that's, that's consistent with what the voters approved, that we can have our plan by September 30th and the IOC then has to approve it, but it doesn't have to be by September 30th.
Okay. The other thing I just want to get on the record here, is there a suggestion that the MPO can simply add budget issues, roads, whatever else to our, our budget somehow without us approving it and approving the road? I just would like that for clarification.
There are two different components there, I believe, you know, they, they kind of get mixed together sometimes. One is we do an annual budgeting process based on our identification of resurfacing needs and all that. When you look at the LRTP, that information, there's a statement in there talking about infrastructure needs, you know, we need to do resurfacing, all those kind of things. That information's provided by us and the other agencies to MPO, and they characterize it in a summary. With regard to capacity projects, they do system modeling and they identify roads that are, have capacity issues today. They also identify roads that have capacity issues in the future as part of the 2045 plan that will be coming out later this year. But there's consistency, when you look at those plans every five years, some of the same roads keep appearing. They don't set priorities. They identify it as a needs based on their analysis of population growth and land use, their analysis of that. And so therefore, you know, we're taking those and we're trying to fit them in with the program. And so that's where it's coming from. They're not in our budget process per se.
Right. But you're not saying that somehow they're on some list for us to move forward without approval of this board?
Never, no.
Okay.
I mean, those, the CIP comes to you all every year.
Right. And so I just, and the other, so, so, but that was the suggestion. And, and I know that this year, there was, that went to, for the tip, there were submissions made that were not approved by this board ahead of time. So I just want, I think that process has to be clarified and dealt with. I found that very disturbing, to say the least. The other thing I'd just like to say, when you read the article in the paper with regards to the MPO modeling, there were, if you check the comment section on that article, it's amazing. There were, there was traffic. One of the guys that does traffic every morning for the media made significant critiques of that modeling and how poor that it was. And there were also neighborhood people that wrote about exactly what the conditions were on these roads and why, and that aren't part of the model. And so I just want to say that I'm, I'm thinking that that again has to be, just as we're looking at this, that modeling has to be really significantly looked at. And I did discuss that with Ms. Alden, who's, who did, you know, who's, who did, you know, suggest that there were significant flaws in that modeling and limitations. So anyway, I just wanted to add that to this discussion.
Mr. Chair, just, it was a July twenty-second email from, from the MPO saying that based on the appeals that were filed July eighteenth and nineteenth, and based on discussions according to this email with county attorney's office, because the process may take as long as a year, we will have to postpone all Surtax and IOC-related activities until after a final judgment is issued. So that, we received that July twenty-second from the MPO.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm an MPO board member, and I haven't seen that letter, so that's, that's funny. So would you please forward that to our email boxes, and we can deal with the MPO process from there? Thank you. Slide number ten, if, if you, I just have one question. It showed, yeah, that would be good. Okay, thank you. Just one question, the surplus. So, so the first bullet is saying kind of a hypothetical, a theoretical exercise of what would happen if we, if we funded our initial, our additional needs only with the Surtax, which, you know, we wouldn't do in any kind of scenario. We would have extra funding sources, right? But this is just to take us through the, what the, what the Surtax can and can't do.
So, so there's existing CIP that's in the recommended budget. The eight, nine hundred and fifty million, whatever the number is, is balanced to those revenue sources that are existing gas, existing gas taxes, all that. The additional one point five billion dollars in projects are allocated based on, you know, what, kind of what we propose to do, what we think we can deliver, and that's where it creates to, you know, my opinion is that, you know, we were, we were provided with the Surtax categories, and we were provided with the, the percentages. And so we're trying to make the program match the revenue sources, and that's challenging. I mean, to, to say the least, it's challenging to do that. And to Commissioner Hagan's point is that, you know, it's, it varies on a year-to-year basis of what perhaps the needs are. Some of these projects really need to be looked at on the long term, and I think that's where there's a potential to come back and say, if we had a period of time, how would we allocate the funds to meet the needs? There's always going to be challenges within any of these subprograms is balancing trail projects to intersection projects to complete street projects, to all those things. You can't have everything, and so we have to make decisions to say that these are priorities over the others. Within each of those categories, it's fairly easy to say, we know what a bridge condition is, we know what pavement condition is. So those, you know, it's kind of a long answer, but I think that's where it gets to.
Yeah, and I get that point. The, what, what I don't understand is how, if we imagine that we're going to take our additional needs and fund them only with Surtax over the next ten years with no other, no other funding sources, just to take ourselves through this mental exercise so we see how the Surtax can work, how we could possibly have a surplus in the first four categories of the Surtax of one hundred and twenty-five million? I mean, the, the first four categories are maintenance and vulnerability reduction, congestion reduction, transportation safety improvements, transportation network improvements. And, and those are broad, and as, as Commissioner Overman has alluded, and you have talked about, there's a lot that fits in that. How can we possibly finish all those categories in ten years and then, and still have one hundred and twenty-five million left over? I mean, it just seems like we could still find some, you know, some projects to do, to, to, to fill that. So, I mean, it seems like, I don't even know what you're getting at there, except for to try to show that we could put some.
The question is, are we trying to force the program to fit the revenue? I mean, if, if that's, if, if that's what we want to do, as Mike mentioned, it's based on the professional recommendations of our staff, looking at needs and trying to balance what can actually be delivered. You know, we can, as an example, we could put as much money as we wanted on any single program, but at some point, it's going to be impossible to deliver to that. And so we're trying to balance all that and say, this is what's deliverable. And, and so it's, it's a constant balancing act of revenues, what the priorities are, the timing of projects. All those things play into those factors, and so it's not just, we'll stick thirty percent of the money here and hope for the best.
So you couldn't spend another one hundred and twenty-five million in those categories over ten years?
I think we would be taking things out of a prioritization process. We would do things that we wouldn't necessarily do today, you know, ahead of something else. Because within, it kind of goes back to the, the discussion about even in a corridor widening project, you know, many of those things, if you go into the LRTP, there's statistics in there about some of these corridors that have crash issues because of capacity, because of other reasons as well, that there's improvements. So there's, there's, there's backup information that backs this up. Ultimately, what we're lacking is, and I don't think anybody has this, that says, here's the magic bullet to balance all these different types of priorities. And do that, at some point, there's discussion and, and resolution of how we fund things and how we move ahead, you know, with, with you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Can I borrow your certain definitions of yours? Thank you. I meant to bring this with me. Thank you, I appreciate it, and I think to, Commissioner Smith and I are both sitting here, and we're looking at the category five list of projects. And to your point, I've got a surplus. We have, based on your illustration, and potential scenarios, a surplus of the one twenty-five million in your first scenario, if it's Surtax only funded over ten years, and a deficit of four hundred million. And I'm looking at the projects that are in category five as I think I understood you to say as priority projects based on crash and other data, correct?
They're, they're high, they're high needs, and as I mentioned before, there's more work to be done for projects that are sitting out several years. That's why we're looking at ten years to do the initial cut of these. That's, that's the challenge is that there's this expectation that there's this whole list of stuff just sitting on the shelf waiting to be done. The needs within, if you, if you look at the 2045 needs that comes out of the LRTP or any other documents that we've discussed for many years, there's billions and billions of dollars in needs across the county. You know, the Surtax is not going to fund all those. But, but back to this is, these are initial cuts of projects that we're doing. We're not asking you to include these in the CIP right now. That comes back to really working that first-year program, because there still is a lot of planning that needs to be done. There's coordination with HART on these corridors to whether they become different routes that they need as well. There's still, you know, their revenue change scenario, it will really change how they're going to be looking at, you know, they're providing bus service as well. So all that has to be done. The, the longer-range land use piece, all those things have to be tied into it. But we do know that these corridors, as identified, have been identified as needs within the LRTP.
And I, and I completely appreciate that. Majority of them are a combination of funding that, from what I, if I'm reading your presentation correctly, a combination of Hillsborough County funds as well as LRTP, you know, coordination with FDOT and everybody else's money.
And we haven't included any grant money in this scenario.
Right.
And we would always apply for grant money.
Right, and that's definitely on my list of things to do. But I, I'm still challenged by the presentation that shows we have a four hundred million dollar deficit over ten years. And then looking at the project list for category five, that would imply that that is remaining funds, which was, in my understanding of remaining funds, the categories that are not the other funds, congestion reduction, safety improvements, transportation network improvements, as well as maintenance and vulnerability, which includes improving and repairing streets, roads, bridges, trails, potholes, you know, reduce congestion. And then the safety improvements would address, you know, sidewalks and other issues. And one of the projects is sidewalk retrofit construction funding in category five. And I'm like, how'd we get there? And others are heartline capital allocation. How do we get there?
So, so.
So I'm, I'm, you know, if I'm, if I'm using a number of four hundred million dollars deficit in category five as a way of ju, adjusting the allocations of the Surtax of the fifty-five percent that are go to transportation, I need a better understanding of how category five was applied to any of these projects.
I can explain those. So, so as an example, the heartline capital allocation is in the existing CIP. It's not a project of ours, it's just a funding mechanism, so it's, it doesn't fit into our four categories as defined. It's just, it's a funding mechanism to go there, but in the future needs for the additional capital, it's a zero.
So, help me understand something. So transportation network improvements that include bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure and related improvements that make walking and bikers, biking safety or congestion reduction that is oftentimes addressed with the investment in transit. I'm try, I'm still trying to figure out how it ends up in category five. Just as one example of the many projects on this list.
But it's, but none of those projects that you just mentioned are in the additional needs category. They had to be categorized. Even if they're miscategorized, it has no impact on what the ten-year additional needs are, because these are zero requests in that column.
Understood, but my, when I'm looking at your presentation regarding funding implications, it implies that the additional needs are in the area of category five, where there's a deficit versus the other four categories where there appears to be a surplus.
So this, this is, this is the whole point. You're, you're exactly as frustrated as we are. When you take a plan such as the Surtax, and you drive that plan from a revenue point of view, and you set up arbitrary categories, this is what you end up with. Because then we have to make judgments about what fits those categories, and it doesn't allocate the revenues efficiently. If we wanted to do it efficiently, we would do exactly what you've been saying. Identify the priorities, find out where there are linkages in the network, rank them and spend the money, not be subject to artificial allocations of revenue.
It's, I, I respectfully disagree with you on so many different levels. I can hardly speak right now, but I'm going to work on it. Okay, so one, it's not arbitrary, it's smart growth planning. And if we actually had a smart growth plan on how we address our growth and our transportation efforts going forward to include a balance between human beings and moving them from one place to another, which includes not only roads but also transit plan, we wouldn't be calling these arbitrary buckets. These, these buckets are designed to address the growth, a potential smart growth transportation plan that includes a balance between the needs of where our people are and how they get where they need to go without necessarily being a car-centric plan. So I'm, I disagree with you on the idea that they're arbitrary, because I do not believe they are. And I do think they embed within those buckets the concept of finding a balance between using smart transportation, long-term, complex, integrated transit planning as part of our solution for helping people get around beyond widening roads.
I'm not saying the buckets are arbitrary, the revenue is arbitrary. The buckets do reflect smart growth. The problem is, what I said initially, it's being driven by revenue, not by needs. It's, it, it's completely upside down. It's, it's, it, it just flies in the face of all good financial planning. You start with what you need, you justify the needs, and then you figure out how to pay for it. You don't say, here's a hundred million dollars, and now, not only is a hundred million dollars, but the hundred million dollars is being arbitrarily, dollars are being arbitrarily limited, not the categories. We end up in this mess. We spent hundreds of man-hours trying to disentangle the dollars, not the categories. And when you do that, you make judgments. So in the, in the charter, in the charter amendment, there's a provision that says all of the agencies, HART, cities, us, have to engage an independent engineer to help us evaluate, did we make the right decisions by making a judgment about it goes in this bucket or this bucket? That's how upside down this is. You're, you're, I agree. All good principles, all good transportation, all good connections. We're frustrated because together, we know what, we can figure out what the right priorities are, how to connect it to transit, how to connect it to, to sidewalks, and then we've got these arbitrary revenue allocations. We have to live within them, and that creates surpluses in areas that we don't want them. And it creates deficits where we don't want them. That's the problem.
Well, that's always the problem in transportation planning.
No, it's not.
We have federal money that we have to use a certain way, there's state money we have to use a certain way, and there's restrictions in buckets as far as, you know, all the way up to Washington.
The Surtax itself, under state statute, has no restrictions. It is a very flexible, very robust funding source for operating capital. It has no restrictions. It should be used in a way that makes sense to do the things that you want to achieve in a way that's consistent with good engineering principles. That's the point we've been trying to make. It's not in disagreement with anything you're saying. It's just you can't drive needs from a revenue. So this is exactly what happened in this county when I came here thirty years ago. It's exactly what happened in water and sewer. Back then, they said, somebody came in and sold the Board of County Commissioners at that time on raising almost seven hundred million dollars in revenue for water and sewer. Only later did they then figure out how to spend it, and what did that drive? It drove high rates, it drove high water and sewer rates, it drove poor planning, because they started with, well, here's a bunch of money, here's seven hundred million dollars, and you know who got rich off of that? The underwriters. They're the ones who proposed it. Every time you start from a revenue point of view, you end up upside down. That's why we keep saying, take, leave the categories. The categories are great, we love the categories. Take out the revenue restrictions so that you can do the job you need to do, and we can help you do the job, together with MPO and HART and everyone else. Otherwise, you end up with this crazy quilt thing that we're trying to untangle, and it confuses you and it confuses us. And there's going to be arguments. There's going to be arguments, because our independent engineer is going to say, yep, you got the categories right, and there's going to be someone sitting on the IOC who says the same thing that you did. Why do we have one hundred and twenty-five million in surplus? I don't get that. And the independent engineer is going to say, because I'm an independent engineer, under my license, I went through the Surtax limitations, I went through the projects, I matched them up, and this is my best judgment. And we'll be in that hamster wheel forever. This is, just never ends, and, believe me, we are frustrated. We have spent literally hundreds of hours trying to do this. This is the best we can do for you today, and, you know, I'm sorry that it's confusing, it's confusing to us as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do want to thank staff. I've been here, this is my ninth budget, and I honestly, this is the first real comprehensive look. I've really seen what our needs are. And I know you guys have poured hours into it, and you're very passionate about every single detail of it. So I really thank you, and I think for the new people, I mean, this has really been really good to get all this. And our discussion has been good, and we may not philosophically align, but I do know in the end, we're going to get there. And that's what's important. I do want to ask you, and I, that, the buckets don't work for county. I mean, I'm going to say this, I said it last week. What it, I mean, you cannot ignore the needs of unincorporated, and the buckets really do that. And the buckets really do that by limiting, as you all have said, limiting the flexibility in that bucket. So, I know we're going to continue to have that conversation, but the, that bucket number five, I think we, based on the revenue, we would get 16 million a year in bucket five? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's 17%.
So, my question is, and I guess I asked this last week, and I, I appreciate the funding implications, but what do we need, like, every year? I mean, can you break it down? I mean, do we just divide, like, I, and I love seeing the need because that's what I asked for, but how do you break that down in 10 years? Is it 100 million? Is it 80 million? What is our exact need annually based on the plan you presented us for the bucket number five?
So before John explains it, the fundamental, there's a fundamental understanding here. There's what you need to spend and there's what you need to appropriate. And this applies to Heart, it applies to everyone. When you have massive projects like this, whether it's a bus system, a rail system, a road system, there's what you need to have in revenue in order to appropriate a contract. That's a multi-year contract. In Florida and most states in this country, before a government agency can contract for a major project, transit, anything, you've got to have the funding there to encumber the contract. That's not equal to the amount you spend every year. If it's a five-year project and it's $100 million in total, you got to have the $100 million upfront to encumber the contract. You may spend 20 million a year, but that's why you need to have all the revenue upfront. Or, in lieu of the revenue, you have to have a financing, but the financing is dependent on having the revenue coming down the road. So, I think that's a lot of what, I know you understand, but a lot of people who have no reason to understand it, it confuses them. But, but in our world, that's what you have to live with. In the corporate world, you don't have to live with that. It's, it's just the nature of the beast. So, per year, the answer is?
The answer is, it depends. It depends on the year, right?
Well, or give us the total.
Sure.
Like, you, you tell us the deficit, but what's $400 million attached to?
Sure. So, so what I, I believe, and we can, we can verify this when we come back on August 15th, is that if we looked at those roadway capacity projects, which include all the other things, the pedestrian features and all that, it's probably somewhere over $1 billion. And so, you know, we wouldn't spend, you know, 100 million a year over 10 years to get to that. It's going to depend. Those are going to be, you know, they're going to be ramping up because we hire engineers, the engineering cost of a typical project's about 6% or 7%.
So there's always, in every major construction project that I've been through in the corporate world, in this world, there's a spending curve. And the curve is generally the same. You start out spending at this level, it grows and then it declines. It's typically a bell curve with some variations. So that's why the answer isn't, it's 20 million a year. It's a $100 million project over five years that the spending curve goes like this. And you have to be able to plan for it, to encumber it, to do gap financing because sometimes the revenues don't come in when you need to spend them and you have to do short-term commercial paper like we have our program. So, that's why it gets to be, the answer is it depends. It depends on the project, it depends on the duration, it depends on a lot of things.
But you need more money upfront. I mean, basically, that's what you're saying to have the contract.
But it's the encumbrance for, you need a lot, you need the money upfront to encumber it. From an expenditure point of view, you don't need as much upfront because it's PD and E, and then you grow and then you hit construction and then you're coming down the slide. So that's why we wanted to present this as the plan.
Okay.
Here's the plan. This is the revenue we need, assuming that you agree with the projects and it's up to you to select the projects. But that's why if you come at it from a needs point of view, we can take that, Bonnie, Tom, our consultants, and we can figure out the spending curves, financing issues, and bring back to you the revenue. We do that all the time. It's just when we have to come at it from the other point of view, it's just, it just drives you nuts. And, and it leads to bad, bad financial decisions. So.
And I, and I suspect what we'll do when we bring the project list back for the first year, it's not going to be revenue or funding driven, it's going to be what we could actually start in that first year. And, and those would be the projects we would ask to approve. So it will be independent of funding or resources. It'll be aligned with the categorization tightly, but I think it's independent of that because we aren't going to spend, you know, there's going to be about $190 million or so deposited in the bank account at some point. And there's no way in the world that in the first six or nine months of next fiscal year that we're going to spend that much money or even commit to that. But in the spending, the earlier questions you asked is, you know, a road widening project or a big project is a five, six to seven-year process. The first couple of years are going to be designed, first two to three years are designed. There's about a year, a year and a half, two years of land acquisition. So, so the first piece is maybe 10% of the project, the next piece is maybe 30 or 40% of the project, and then we get into the construction and it's the remaining part of the project. And so, it, it builds up over a period of time and then starts winding down at the end to get the closeout. So then, all those projects, whether they're intersection projects or complete street projects, any of these things that require design, we'll go through that process. Some schedules could be smaller, but the ramp-up of spending for each individual project is almost the same in every case.
Okay. Then my last question is, why wasn't an option not listed of doing our own referendum if the SRTAX does not come through?
Excuse me? What'd you say?
Why was one of the options not doing our own referendum?
We, who doing our own?
This county commission.
I will back away from the podium at this point.
No, but I do think it should have been on here as an option if the SRTAX is not approved. But that's just, I mean.
No, it's a good question. Part of it is because of timing. So, the first you could get to the, to the election would be the '20 election.
Right.
And meanwhile, the clock has already been ticking on projects we should be starting. So, you know, when, yes, that could be, I don't, I see, I wouldn't even, I don't even know if there's enough time to restart another initiative. But what we know for sure is we need, we have needs now. So the gas tax, public service tax, those could all be like interim funding sources just to kind of keep things going.
No, 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 I definitely agree. I definitely.
I wasn't going to put that in there.
No, I mean, you know, we all know there's needs. And I think once you understand that the 812 million didn't really touch everything that was needed. So, but the option of us doing our own referendum should be an option in lieu of, you know, we could implement the gas tax and the public services tax. And then if we did our own referendum, obviously, we could replace, like, the public services tax at some point.
Right, right.
That's all the point I was making.
Yes, that's a good point.
I'm getting, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to say I'm getting older, but I am getting wiser.
And older. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I don't find it all credible, all this. First of all, we're acting as if we don't have money that we, we wouldn't have had at the rate of, how much do we get a year? 160 million or something a year?
Our share of the SRTAX? It's about 110 million.
110 million, sorry. I was counting all the cities in that outside of Heart. Okay, 110 million a year. $110 million a year is a lot of money for us to do a lot with. I had always understood that we were doing already $25 million a year just as regular maintenance in our budget, in unincorporated of 25 million in road resurfacing, whatever. I don't know where that has disappeared to. I, I'm a little bit incredulous at this list because I, you know, we had a motion that, you know, we all approved up here to do a two-mile safety zone around schools. I understood that that would be like, you know, incredibly costly and, and go, so I, I want to see some of the specifics of policies like that against this. I'd like to say also that the 812 million dollar was a total fantasy. We keep projecting and putting out these things that were total fantasies and we could do that because we didn't have funding that we actually had to match with it. And it was, it's very clear now that it was never really, I don't think, and I didn't think at the time and said so, that it was never real money that was there. I couldn't ever see how that could be in unincorporated to begin with. I will say as an exper, as a commissioner, when I started, the first thing, it was a $600 million plan without a meeting. I got a call from Mr. Merrill and it went to a $750 million plan. And we didn't even have a meeting, I just heard in between, oh, that's the plan we're going to discuss. The next call I got from Mr. Merrill was, oh, it's going to be an 812 million dollar plan. And by the way, each time I asked, because I was thinking something, I was trying to figure out countywide, unincorporated, we didn't have any money that we could think about for Heart, not a cent in that whole thing. But at any rate, the, it, it went there. To have the idea, if, if the new commissioners have an idea, I don't believe that we do have any kind of comprehensive, integrated, systematic plan that's been done that we're drawing from. All Go Hillsborough was, all the 812 million dollars was, was a list. And please, if you'd like to, go back and review the minutes of transcript from that meeting. There is, and I was told in advance that we would not even be voting on it, that we would just be learning about it at that meeting. And of course, all of a sudden, there was a vote and it was a six to one vote in support of that. But I've never had the belief that we have any comprehensive systematic plan that is integrated and that, and I would like to see that happen. And maybe if we had that happen, then we could have a real demonstration of why somehow this revenue is so, you know, doesn't reflect that. But I, you know, I think this would more reflect, and that's why I supported it, the kinds of things that I'd like to see in the order. And I don't want to have our priorities reset in a way that doesn't reflect that. But I, you know, it'd be really, and maybe we can be working on this, I've never seen it to be any kind of, as I said, comprehensive systemic plan about how we move forward. And so, so, you know, to criticize this before we have that, which I don't believe we have it, and I think we have to have every one of these projects that you're suggesting here reviewed. I've never, I've never had a project in my whole time here, I can tell you, that I've never had a project presented to me in the depth that I would like to have to understand how it fits into a plan. Those things are just kind of done and put in the budget and that's it. And I think we need a whole lot more of that so that we can move forward in a way of smart growth. Thank you for your identifying that to, to both the commissioners. I agree with you 100% that we, and I think we need to move forward in a way that we haven't in the past.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I do agree with, with Commissioner Kemp that the 812 million was not real money and it was a fantasy. I, I agree with, with you on that. A dedicated funding source is the only way to meet our unfunded needs. I also agree with, with Commissioner Overman that the buckets are based on smart growth planning principles, and I fully support that. But having worked closely on two referendums, I can say unequivocally that the percentage allocations are most definitely arbitrary and therefore significant limitations and shortfalls exist. As I said last week, I thi, I think we can and we should lead on this issue and improve the plan. That flexibility exists, we should not just rubber stamp what we were provided, and I hope we consider that in our future meeting. And lastly, should the referendum be tossed out, there's always, so let me remind the board that we have a charter review board that's getting ready to meet as well.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize that we're going to go to summary from Mr. Merrill.
Well, I, this is obviously a very, very big challenge and I want to thank Mr. Lyons for doing the yeoman's work on this. It is a beast to try and navigate coordinating projects, timing projects, funding the projects, and having Ms. Wise actually try to figure out how to do the financing and capital and staging. You know, you're, all of you are doing a great job. I think what we're wrestling with here is we have a really nice revenue source and we're trying to figure out how to fit it to the, the structure of a transportation rule book that is, and a harbor, you know, that an engineer has to be able to decipher when we still, as a group, aren't clear about what, how we're going to find a balance between how we've grown and how we plan to grow and how we address where we've not funded well and where, how we do it, or how we retrofit, fixing what we haven't done because monies come from certain places. You know, it was interesting when I first got started on this idea of doing better growth planning or some growth planning and addressing a balance between how people get around. One of the things I had always said when, in the MPO meetings and CAC to the MPO meetings is, you know, there will be no lack of asphalt work that has to be done no matter how we do this, okay? So there's no conflict there, really. It's, it's how we go about approaching it. And I think that's the, what I think we hear is being the challenge. The concept that the bucket five is a road capacity classification depends on the engineer that you talk to, to some degree. So I think we can get there without necessarily deciding how the buckets work or don't work at this point. But the good news is we will, assuming the SRTAX survives, is that we will have monies that we can figure out how to make work within a growth plan as well as within the funding mechanisms that we have to live in. So, you know, I'm going to count my blessings that we have this. And I think we have the talent to help manage it. And at the end of the day, for the last, say, last 10 years, you know, what have we spent on a rough guess number, and maybe Ms. Wise can help us figure that out, that we've been able to manage in the area of transportation that is on the road, safety, you know, all of our bucket size that's not transit? You know, what on average have we been managing to spend? So, you know, one, we've got the money, but we also have to look at the capacity of what the county can do in any given period of time. So, I mean, on average, what have we been spending, oh, let's say, on an annualized basis to address Commissioner Murman's sort of issue? You know, what can we manage over the next 10 years irrespective of how much money's coming in or going out on our project list?
So, so there's, there's a couple of components to that is, since, since 2016, we've increased spending and resources within the maintenance side of things, you know, mowing grass, cleaning ditches, all those kind of things, trimming trees, patching potholes. We've also been increasing our spending in the transportation side on the capital side as well. It was that slow ramp up. We're projected this year on the capital side, our expenditures, writing checks to contractors, will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to 90 million dollars. And it should be a little bit more next year as well. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a resource issue, whether we bring on consultants to assist us, which we are doing, we're not, you know, we need to add some staff, but we'll also bring on consultants to help us manage that process. I believe our capacity, you know, there's going to be a balance point that we could probably spend easily, you know, 150 to 175 million dollars a year if we annualize it. It'll take a little bit to get there, but, you know, as some of these intersection projects resurfacing, I mean, we're spending about 25, projecting to spend about 25 million a year in resurfacing, we'd like to bump that to about 35. It'll make significant progress. So, it is a capacity issue, you know, within the resources of staffing and everything else. It takes a little bit of time to get ramped up.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kemp, brief, please.
Thank you. I'd like to just make one point about this. Road widenings are extraordinarily expensive and we
Road widenings are extraordinarily expensive, and we just learned that we would get $110 a year, $110 million a year, which is a huge amount. And I'll just point out to you that the road widening for 3.7 miles of Lithia Pinecrest is $100 million, and that's now. I'm sure it would be more in the future. So it could, that single road widening could take up an entire year's budget easily. So I think that we need to be mindful of that, too, when we think about what makes sense and what we do moving forward.
Summary remarks, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, so the main event is we have to set the trim millage, and I guess before we do that, we have to decide whether you want to move forward with the recommended budget, which deals with that $31 million. An option I'll lay on the table is just to waive the transportation policy for the FY20 budget, which would allow us to fund then all of the public safety needs. We would not then be saying we're transferring the $31 million to SRTAC, because we don't know if the SRTAC is even going to be here. But it allows us to fund essential public needs that we know we need right now. Waiving the policy for a year allows us to get the SRTAC litigation out of the way. It allows us to do whatever other planning we need to do on the revenue side. More importantly, it balances the budget and funds what we know we need to fund. And then you could set the trim millage, and we can move forward with transportation workshops to dig into all of the nitty-gritty.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Merman. We're now, is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. I, I don't understand what you're, when you say waive the transportation policy.
Right.
What are you asking us to do?
Right, yeah, yeah, we're just suspending it for a year. So the recommended budget is based on, instead of funding the $31 million in transportation costs with, with general revenue, it originally said, let's, let's fund it with SRTAC. What I'm saying is, let's just waive the policy altogether for a year, which means then we don't have to dedicate general revenue in FY20 for transportation. It doesn't affect any of the projects that are underway, and it allows us to fund public safety and other needs.
I'm glad I asked it, but I thought somehow that, when we were talking about all the buckets and everything, I thought there was something, other implication besides that and what you were suggesting.
No, no, it's okay, no. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Merman. Is there no further discussion? Restate the motion?
Just so we're waiving the transportation policy for fiscal year 20.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Please record your vote.
Sorry, it's not, it's not working. Got it.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
So that just leaves the vote on the trim millage, which requires five votes to approve it, and we need to read the, Tom or Sam, you want to read?
Before, before we get there, we have some commissioners.
I'm sorry, it does not require five.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
If we approve the trim millage, is that, or if we set the trim millage, is that adopting this recommended budget? Is that?
No. So it, it's based on the recommended budget. But again, that, it just simply says, you, as you move towards adoption in September, you can't raise the millage in any of the general funds or library funds, but you can do anything else as long as you keep the millage at.
So I'm still very concerned about the $2.3 million for heart that Commissioner Kemp and I discussed.
Excuse me, excuse me, let me, let me talk to you about that. You're going there, I talked to Mr. Limer yesterday, he does not need the $2.3 million. He said they've gone and reworked their budget, and he does not need the $2.3 million. I talked to him yesterday.
I talked to him, and he said that he did.
I talked to him yesterday, but I, I'll tell you exactly what time I talked to him, because he called me, and he told me yesterday at 12:36 was the first call. He said he does not need it. And I called him back at 5:08 and said, explain to me why. He said, we've reworked the budget, we've done some projects, we do not need the $2.3 million from Hillsborough County.
It was my understanding that would take very drastic measures.
I don't know what drastic measures it would take, Commissioner Smith, but he said he does not need it.
And that's consistent with what he told me and told Bonnie. So there's been three separate conversations with Mr. Limer, and even if we were going to give him the money, what I recommended in our last discussion is that we loan him the money.
Right, exactly.
That wouldn't affect this budget. We would take it from a reserve, we would loan it to them and expect to be repaid.
In my conversation with him about that, I told him it would be a loan, and we could work out a interest-free loan, and we'll work out the payment period for it. It could be as high as 10 years, and he's at that particular point in time, so I'll get back with you. He did, and said we don't need it.
All right.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Yeah, despite that, I am familiar with the heart budget and what has been cut there and what has been how, and, you know, I don't think, you know, I made that motion, and I'll make it again, and I'll just include it in here as a guarantee that there is $2.3 million that is made on a loan basis to heart for this year, and that the loan is contingent upon the sales tax materializing. If the sales tax materializes, then the loan should be paid back by that. If the sales tax does not materialize in the end, I think that that is a continuing item. I will say that I asked for this to be added into the budget and believed, I was assured that it was back in February, and had to suss this out through two different directors. It is a desperate need, I can tell you by looking at what they need right now, and I don't want to see cuts made now. I don't want to see that happen, and, and that, that is, I mean, we are already spending at heart a million dollars more on the shields, and I will just say, too, that, as I've said before in the past, every county in this state until this November, with the exception of Hillsborough and Pinellas, were totally supporting their transit systems through their countywide tax dollars, 40%, which comes from the cities, and another 60%, but that, that is how their transportation systems, their transit systems were supported, and for us to turn our backs and act like somehow that that isn't part of our county and part of our, integral part of our transportation needs, I think would be wrong. This is not the time to do this, so I'd appreciate a, a second on that, and I think we, thank you, need to take a vote, just to make sure that that's on the record and acknowledged in the budget.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. To the motion? You're next in the queue, are you speaking on the motion? Commissioner Hagan, speaking on the motion? Mr. Merman, speaking to the motion? Commissioner Smith, speaking to the motion, you recognize.
What, regardless of what our new CEO told you, or you, or me, or Commissioner Kemp, I do know that the budget for heart was cut severely for Mission Max. It is at that level now. It is currently the lowest budget for transit of any metropolitan area our size in the country. That's, that's the state of things right now as we sit here. We don't, what we do know about the transportation taxes, if it comes, it's going to be late in 2020 because of the Supreme Court challenges. So we have this whole, from October 1st, 2019 to September 30th of 2020, period where we can continue to provide that stopgap funding of $2.3 million that was given in 2018 and 2019 when Mission Max happened and cut services so drastically that we, we added that $2.3 million to, to, to add a few services. So I am, you know, it's, it's clear that we're all getting mixed messages from the new CEO, and that's not what I'm basing my, my vote on or my, my, my support of this $2.3 million. What I'm basing it on is we're the lowest-funded transit agency in the nation for a metropolitan area our size. We don't know what's happening, but for now, from October 1st to September 30th, the period of our fiscal year 2020 budget, we know we need to provide that same $2.3 million that, that we have been given in order to maintain this bare minimum level of service. There isn't anything else that they're getting from anywhere else to, to provide that. So that's why I'm supporting that.
Before, let me take it on memory lane, okay? When Mission Max was put into place, bringing in fact that we didn't have the dollars in the budget, it did cut heart's budget. And we worked hard to try to restore some of those routes back to Mission Max. When I became chairman of heart, one of the things I brought to the table, and some of you were on the board at that time at heart, was the increase in the millage. Heart has the ability to increase its own millage. I brought that to the heart board. There was not appetite for it, none whatsoever, ever, okay? So we basically backed off that, and we, for two years, gave heart $2.3 million. There was no dedication, no, no specific saying that we were going to give it to you for three years, because I got a phone call from Mr. Limer saying, oh, where's the $2.3 million in the budget, because the mere fact is that you were going to give it to us for the three years? No, we did not say that. There was nothing said about that whatsoever, all right? So at that particular point in time, the discussion with Mr. Merrill was, it was not there, Mr. Limer understood that, finally got that cleared up, and we said, well, Mr. Limer, we will loan heart the $2.3 million, interest-free, and we'll work out a plan of paying it back up to 10 years. I got the phone call from him saying we don't need it. Now, he's, he's the CEO of heart, and he's sitting there saying to me as the chairman, we don't need it. So I'm trying to figure out where we're coming from now needing the $2.3 million. So at that, at this point, coming from the, the CEO of heart who sits there and works on the budget every day, I'm not going to support the motion. I'm not going to support it, because the mere fact, the CEO is saying, we don't need it. That's the bottom line that I'm going with. So any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm making sure who's on first here. Previously, we were talking about a millage vote, and now we're talking about this vote prior to making the millage vote, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to be clear on. I actually heard, actually, all five of these conversations, and had a similar conversation with, with our transit agency CEO, who was very concerned about a loan that the agency would not be able to pay back. And I'm not sure to your motion, that includes terms to indicate that if the SRTAC should fail, and we have no those resources, that we have a, a vote to forgive that in the event that a loan is appropriate at the moment, because we do anticipate monies. You know, that may not be the question that was asked. What I got when, in my conversation with our heart CEO was, sure, we really do need the resources, but I don't want to borrow money that I can't say I can pay back, and right now I don't think we can do that. So, no, I don't want the money. It doesn't necessarily mean they don't need it. So, but to Commissioner Smith's point, we as a county, as, as you made, have not made a commitment towards our transit investment at anywhere close to what most counties do. And we did have an unexpected million-dollar expenditure that hasn't been spent yet, but is in the process of being implemented, to protect our operators in a way that keeps them safe. They are our front line, just like our, you know, first responders are and our law enforcement are. They are on the front lines of the public. And making that a priority and accomplishing that goal was critically important, and those funds were not available and not budgeted between now and next, next fall. So, you know, I, I would support the motion just based on that, not on what happened, what he said, whatever. I think it's incumbent on this county to recognize the value and importance of taking care of not only our operators and keeping them safe, but also making sure that our transit agency has sustainable revenue, that maybe they did or did not know it was three years or not. It makes no matter. We haven't made a commitment to hearts, to our transit agency in this current budget, because we assume the SRTAC will be there. That leaves them bankrupt if it's not. And I think it's important for us to consider that issue.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize, to the motion.
Thank you. I'm going to propose a substitute motion. You've got two commissioners over here that don't sit on this board anymore. This is the third year we have been in this conversation about giving money to heart. And every year, it evolves into kind of a heated discussion. So I'm proposing a substitute motion that if heart needs additional operating dollars, that they come before this commission with a plan for what is needed, and that it would, for a loan from the commission to be paid back if the SRTAC is not approved or by the Supreme Court. So that's my substitute motion.
There's a mo, there's a motion by Commissioner Merman, a second by Commissioner Hagan. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion? Any discussion on the substitute motion? Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
One thing, so I guess the only difference in that is that they come before heart, come before the BOCC?
I don't, we don't know if they need anything or what amount they do need, so they need to come before us with a plan of what is needed.
Okay, I will just say that that has been done in the past. I will also say that the $2.3 million, as I said, I, I never believed, and I have been the one every year to put this on, and never believed that it was guaranteed, and that has never been something that has been said, that I did ask in budget conversations and understood that it would be part of what was being put in this year because of the sales tax not being available, and I didn't want to see services cut. I also think it's really, I, I find it really disturbing that I wasn't the first one approached, since this has been something that I put in the budget and didn't hear about this until I discovered it not being in the heart budget and started asking questions, then was told that the former interim CEO said, okay. But I don't think that the CEOs are the people that should be put in the firing line here, and that's what I feel like has been done with this, and put in a really terrible position. As heart board members, we can see that budget, you can see that budget, and we know what services, in fact, I wish it could be more because of the services that were cut, cut, because we had to pay healthcare bills for the workers of heart in the first place. And we actually didn't even restore the things that were cut. We, they couldn't do that at the time. But again, I'll just say, you know, it's fine, but I, I, if, if we feel like we have to bring Mr. Limer in here, that has been done in the past with these exact routes that were funded. By the way, it funded Hillsborough Avenue every 15 minutes through unincorporated and the city, and that increased the ridership hugely. But, and among four routes that it funded, one in, in, on, in Brandon. But at any rate, I'm just, this, I just think it's really terrible that, that we have, you know, subject the CEO and, and involve them in this, in this way, in all these representations. And I talked to Mr. Merrill. And I talked to Mr. Merrill, and was told that this would be fine to be on here, that I was wondering, because he said he was going to add it as a flagged item. I said, "As long as Heart could, you know, as long as Heart would have the ability to have it forgiven if the sales tax didn't come through." That's the same plan I discussed with Mr. Limer, who did initially feel uncomfortable with it, but when I said, "If the sales tax doesn't come through, then, you know, we can..." Then I would include that as a condition, which I did in my motion in the first place. But I'm just, I feel really that the way that this has been proceeded with has been very, very disconcerting.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question. On the substitute motion, that request for information for Heart, from Heart, that could be fulfilled by a letter and some documentation. You're not saying that...
No. And actually, this is, does not assume that there is a request from Heart. If Heart does request it, we'll put him on the agenda at one of our meetings. I assume, Mr. Chair, this would be how we would want to do this, and having come before us. And actually, I have to say, over the past few years, we haven't really seen a plan from Heart about how they use the 2.3 million. And we can dispute that, but except for enterprising Latinas that I happen to know about, that I followed and asked for. So I'm just asking, come before the Board with a request. Give him when he needs it.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan. Is there any further discussion? Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Okay, so I think the prior conversation was a motion to actually approve a millage. Is that where we are?
Well, where we are right now is still on flagging items.
Flagging items, okay.
We have the setting of the trim millage rates, but that comes after the flagging of items. We'll have this board discussion of flagging of items at this time.
Okay, so I wanted to ask a quick question before we get there. There has been, in the budget presentation, conversation, and an allocation of $10 million towards affordable housing. And then we have $10 million roughly that we get from the feds, that's a pass-through. But then sometime in the budget presentation, I saw a presentation on funding about $10 million, you know, through a variety of different, you know, land acquisition.
Oh, yeah.
And so, my question, when we consider everything that we've seen, when we're using the words "affordable housing," in my mind, if it's, I don't want to take away the affordable housing $10 million plan for the plan that we represented the other day. I'm assuming that the plan we saw the other day that included affordable housing and the 560 plan, which I thought was terrific, by the way, is an additional $10 million commitment by the county for affordable housing.
Yes.
We have the $10 million trust that we were talking about for affordable housing that we have to develop a plan for. And then we have roughly, previously, the $10 million pass-through of ship and sale dollars that we can, that are basically federally mandated.
That's correct.
And managed by our county, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I needed to know that.
Yeah, no.
Because, you know, basically, we're allocating $30 million towards this process, roughly. And that's what I was trying to get clear.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Right?
So the new, so there's $10 million, which was the money Hope asked for. That's in the budget, separate item, $10 million.
Right.
There is the $10 million plus that was approved last meeting for the various grant sources, CDBG, Home, and so forth.
Right.
And then on top of that would be the initiatives that I recommended, which would have to be separately funded, which was for land banking and for incentives to market rate.
All sounded great.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm happy with all of that, making sure I understood it. My only outstanding issue as it pertains to that is the conversation we had earlier about where the funds sit in the budget. Because if we're going to appoint a millage rate, and while it's still a smaller amount, the conversation on whether it comes out of countywide fund or unincorporated fund matters, I think, right?
Which money?
Affordable housing dollars.
Oh.
Okay, and whether or not they come out of countywide funds versus unincorporated funds. So if we were to move, with the exception of the Hope and, I'm not Hope money, but the Home and Ship and Sale, which comes through as a pass-through anyway, but the other, say, 20, all right, our $10 million plus the presentation that you have shown us, if that is able to be used to not only go to the countywide fund, or be allocated to the countywide fund, because it would be a countywide effort, and it would give us the ability to leverage our efforts with the City of Tampa, or other cities, if, you know, if that applies. I'd like to see, you know, where does that play in the millage conversation? Because we're in this motion example that is in the back of our handout. We established the millage based on the various different breakouts, correct?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. It would not affect the millage either way. So your question is a good one. If we choose to fund affordable housing, the $10 million, not the grant monies, the monies that you were referring to, out of countywide instead of unincorporated, it's not going to affect the millage that you have before you today, either way.
All right, and so the conversation we saw earlier about how much it would cost, if we waived that transportation policy, we don't have to worry about the $30 million coming out of an account that doesn't count, because we don't have it. But a half a mil, when we are almost 2% lower than a common, you know, our neighboring and inclusive county, I mean, city, that's inside our county, in the level of services, you know, isn't necessarily egregious, especially when we're almost 2% below what our, let's say, fellow service provider entity is providing. So, setting the millage now that we can't go up later, is that what I heard earlier? So if we do it now, we're making the decision to not increase our millage. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I just needed to make that real clear, because we're making a decision to set the millage without the ability to increase it, and we have not made a decision or voted on the other revenue sources that are dependent on meeting our funding mechanism for our reserves. The 20% to 25% that we were talking about earlier? Without having those user fees decided on, and setting our millage point where it can't go up, but it can come down, we put at risk that reserve if we're going to cover a budget that we need to cover, right?
Not for FY '20, because the recommended budget includes the reserves set at the level that we had told the rating agencies, 21.6%. So for FY '20, we're fine. And then between, in between now and then, you can entertain other user fee revenues without affecting, setting the millage. Setting the millage today without a limit doesn't preclude you from later adopting other user fees, like gas taxes or anything.
No, they are dependent on them, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and for me to be financially responsible by setting a millage rate at what is basically stable with, without a, what do you call it, when you roll it back? Without a rollback, or whatever that...
Reduce.
Reduce, without a reduction? We, it is incumbent on us to really look at those revenue sources. And so, before I make any other recommendations or choose to vote on this, I need one piece of clarification on what we decided to do on the transportation policy. One, we've agreed to not address what was having to come out of, to fund the other expense, the fire safety and the other needs that we need. Two, previously, I had asked about the fuel tax policy that would preclude funding a previous transit issue, which was precluded to be used for that purpose. So if part of that policy also eliminates the issue associated with restrictions on how the fuel tax could be used for transportation projects, whatever our list looks like, you know, I just need clarity on that. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, so waiving the policy then does both for next year. It would be the $31 million issue that we would have had to fix by funding it with SRTAX just goes away, because the policy goes away. And as long as the policy is waived in its entirety, any other restrictions go away as well, so.
Okay. Well, that's why I was trying to figure out what that five cent meant. And as long as it's used for transportation, then that answers my question. Thank you.
Yes, and I agree that if you waive it, it addresses it, but we were planning to bring back the policy at the next meeting with that deletion as the Board directed us. So we can still do that, I would think.
Okay, well, since we've been having some order issues, I'd like to just make sure I was clear on it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Well, it's my understanding that the trim millages, you know, need to be adopted, but we can always consider additional user fees or any budgetary change that we want to up until September 19th, which is our second budget public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, do we need someone to read this?
We're not there yet.
Not there yet? Okay, well, I'm ready to be there. I'm hungry, okay?
We're not there yet. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
No, I was ready to read it too, so that was my comment.
There's no more flagging and anything along those lines.
Nope.
I'm going to go into the...
Going to the motion.
Motion, I'm going to pass the gavel to the Vice Chair. And I move, we set the following proposed operating and debt service millage for the purpose of the trim notice, and set the date, time, and place of the first public hearing on the Hillsborough County Fiscal Year 2020 budget. Countywide millage, operating, general revenue fund, 5.7309 mills. Debt service, environmentally sensitive lands, .0604 mills. Total countywide millage, 5.7913 mills. Non-countywide millage, operating, general purpose municipal service taxing unit, 4.3745 mills. Library service district, .5583 mills. Debt service, parks and recreation bonds, excuse me, .0259 mills. The proposed percentage change of the aggregate millage from the aggregate rollback millage rate, as defined by state statute, is an increase of 5.75%, and is shown in line 27 Department of Revenue Form DR 420. The date, time, and place of the first public hearing on the budget will be Thursday, September 12, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the Fred B. Carl County Center, Second Floor Boardroom, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. By approving this motion, the appropriate official is authorized to execute the necessary Department of Revenue forms.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, and a second by Commissioner Merman. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Is there a little business coming for us? Seeing none, we adjourn.